Good evening. Welcome to our January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting allows for alternative participation in order to accommodate all citizens. Any written comments sent to the staff were forwarded to the commission directly. Introduction of staff. Mr. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney. Mr. Michael Gardner, City Engineer. Zach Pines, Director of Planning. Leota Coyne, Planner. And Lilly McIntyre, Special Projects Coordinator. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all of whom were appointed by the mayor for staggered terms with the exception of the City Council Representative who was appointed by the City Council. I ask that the comemember missions introduce themselves and state their occupation, starting with Mr. Rumsey.
Stephen Rumsey, Business Owner.
Dana Prince, Attorney.
John Smith, Deputy Director of Environmental Services.
Ann Hornsby, Attorney.
Vince Dooley, UA Campus Planning.
Eddie Pugh, Retired.
I'm Tim Harrison, General Counsel. There are sign-up sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have a maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. Procedures. The commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property, such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff's presentation, I will call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of ten minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, I will then call on any other party in order of sign-up who desires to support the petition and therefore and thereafter will call in order of sign-up those who oppose the petition. Then it is when it is your time for comment, please introduce yourselves stating your name and address to the commission to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included into the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in the response to the objections, we will allow those who oppose the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of the presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your allowed time limit. Once the commission members are satisfied that they have received all relevant information, I will then close further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter amongst themselves. After that, they will vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. Video recordings. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually or video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. In all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and outside the city limits within the city's planning jurisdiction, developments with a special district and approval letters for developments in historic buffer zones, commission serves as the final authority. As to all remaining agenda matters, including annexations, rezonings, planned developments, and street vacation, the commission serves as a recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to the City Council, and the City Council will make final decision on these matters. Subdivision requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. Conflicts of any. Do any of the members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters? If so, please state the same for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I've gotten a conflict on the legacy condominiums S-0925.
S-0925. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rumsey. Confirmation notice. I would ask that the staff to confirm on record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by laws as to the matters before the commission tonight.
It has.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? The following agendas have been modified. Companion cases. Companion cases related to residents at Rice Valley, which includes Z-03-25 and S-05-25, are requesting can continue to the next month. Do I hear a motion?
So we'll need to do a motion to move that to the to the portion of the agenda where it says cases requesting to continue.
So you want to move it to cases? Okay. I'm asking for this motion to be moved on the agenda.
Motion.
Cases to be, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. With that, we will begin with the approval of minutes. As the Planning and Zoning Commission has received this synopsis for the December two thousand and twenty-four meeting, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. Staff?
You need a motion? You need a motion for that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I need a motion.
A motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, staff?
Good evening, Commission. Tonight, we're starting off with the consent agenda. We have three cases on that consent agenda. We did not receive any public comment on these. Do you have any questions for staff?
Do we need to carve the legacy? Isn't this a voice vote?
I'm sorry?
Don't we take a voice vote?
We can.
Should we carve out the legacy? So that Stephen?
Do we need to add the legacy or carve it out?
I think you could voice vote all three of them. If there's a problem, then we could come back and vote on them individually.
Well, you can't vote on the legacy.
I just won't vote on any of the three. You've got a quorum.
Oh, okay. All right. I got you. That's right.
All right. Staff, I mean, commission? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Moving on, we do have two cases requesting to continue tonight. The first is Brixton. You can see those three cases here. We have the petitioner here to request that continuance.
Okay.
Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates, representing Sixty-Eight Ventures with this request to continue. Couple things real quick. Since our initial submission on this project, we've had a very productive meeting with the towns. In addition, a couple of key things that we're hopeful y'all be able to see next month. The townhome component of that original project that was somewhat controversial.
Mr. Duncan, you, I don't know, I can't, we can't hardly hear you.
How about now?
Okay.
The townhome component of that project that was somewhat controversial has been eliminated. Building materials, all these houses are going to be brick on three sides. Buffer was increased, doubled along the towns. Another key item, the home builder, D.R. Horton, has been completely ruled out as a home builder. Density decrease, we've gone down from three point three units per acre to two point nine. What necessitated this continuance request? There was a request last week to change all these lots to sixty-foot lots based on some comments from local builders. Mail notices had already gone out, so we're going to hope to see you guys next month.
Okay. All right. Commission, I have before us companion case Brixton, including AN-01-25. We can do all these at the same time, right, Zach?
Separate.
Separate. All right. I make a motion for continuance for AN-01-25. Can I get a voice vote? Motion?
Motion. You approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For companion case Brixton, GPD-01-25, Sixty-Eight Ventures, I request a motion for continuance.
Motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For PS-01-25, Brixton, I ask for a motion for continuance.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right. Next up, we've got the companion case for residences at Rice Valley. So there's two cases associated with this request or this development. The petitioner is here to request that continuance.
petitioner?
Chase Lucas with TTL thirty-two hundred Rice Mountain Road Northeast, representing the development. We just asked for a continuance. There's some coordination that needs to occur in regards to the conceptual layout and some coordination with the church. So we're just, we're asking to give until next February.
Did we have anybody sign up for this?
We received quite a few public comments. There's probably some people here. So if, I mean, you could open it up to public comment.
No, no one signed up. Okay. All right. Commission before us, we have residents at Rice Valley, Z-03-25, asking for a continuance. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Commission before us, we have companion case residents at Rice Valley, S-05-25, requesting a continuance. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Staff?
All right. Moving into unfinished business, we have S-8524, preliminary plat, Stonehedge number six, re-survey of lot seven, Stonehedge number five. This is consisting of two lots on approximately six point nine acres, locate at eleven-five-five-zero Stonehedge Road. This is not in city limits. You can see we're way north up on the lake, zooming in kind of off of Tears Patton Road, excuse me. You can see splitting that one lot into two, get that existing building on a separate lot, and again, just our plat without contours, sewing those two proposed lots. This was continued last month due to this comment here. No lot may be resubdivided nor more than one dwelling placed on any one lot prior to installation of municipal sewage treatment facilities. So at the time of last month's meeting, we discussed with the applicant a continuance due to this comment. They are requesting three variances. You can see here, when this came before you in January, we had received two public comments, one in support and one with concern regarding the use of the property. Do you have any questions for staff?
Back up to the, is that, is that, that note, platted note?
Yes, so this is on.
Recorded plat?
This is on a recorded plat.
All right.
And we do have.
This is an interesting.
It is, yeah. The petitioner is here to discuss a little bit more about this. I think they might want to request a continuance from what I'm understanding, so that staff can meet with them and discuss kind of what they can do moving forward.
Okay. petitioner?
Thank you. Kevin Hinkle, Montgomery Hinkle, Inc., Professional Land Surveyors, two oh three, Harder Road East. After discussions with city and county, we realized that we need to re-present this in a different manner that would give us a better opportunity, but it would be a major change, so we're asking for a continuance to make that change.
It would be a major change? What'd you say? Change?
Change.
Okay. All right. Okay. Staff, we, before we continue this, we've had several people to sign up in opposition. Do we need to give them an opportunity to speak, or do we just need to?
I would, yeah, I would open it up, and if they feel like they can just wait until next month, they could just.
Mr. Chairman, how do you, I mean, of course, I missed last month, and I apologize. And so, but I heard about the wording that was, that's on the date. How do you ever get around the word municipal?
I can't.
I mean, that's very specific. I mean, that's, that's not saying, you know, if you come up with any answer, if you come up with any disposal, that's saying specifically a municipal. I mean, I don't know how you could, how you can get around it without disregarding it.
I totally agree, unless you build your own pumping station back to the city.
We can keep passing it down the line, I guess, but, I mean, do we even have the legal authority to override a specific word such as municipal? I mean, it's saying, I guess municipal means city soon, right? Or would, or, or maybe that's my interpretation of what municipal would mean. I guess.
Yeah. I think, so we're going to meet with Mr. Hinkle and discuss it a little bit further, I think.
So I guess in light of this, I think we've got, I know we've got four people signed up that to speak, and since we are going to postpone this, do any of you want to speak? Last second. Okay. So, all right, so we'll go down, go down, we'll go down the list. Pardon me? Only one? You want me to go down? The first one to sign up is Mr. Terry Waters. Terry, you want to, you want to speak? Okay, come on. I'm sorry, Mr. Waters.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Terry Waters. I'm a resident of the City of Tuscaloosa. My address is three zero zero nine Nimitz Circle Northeast. My wife and I also own a lake cabin at fifteen-five oh five Marble Road, Northport, Alabama. This lake cabin is at the intersection of Stonehedge Road and Marble Road, approximately a quarter of a mile away from where this lot is proposed to be subdivided. I respectfully oppose this petition that's in violation of the specifications and restrictions included in the subdivision plat and notes for Stonehedge number five, recorded on February the second nineteen eighty. Lot number seven that is in this petition that is proposed to be subdivided was originally included as a lot in Stonehedge number five, as was indicated on this, on the screen. Note number three on the recorded plat states, "No lot shall be resubdivided nor more than one dwelling placed on any one lot prior to the installation of municipal sewage treatment facilities." There is no municipal sewage treatment facility available for this lot. Note number ten on the recorded plat for Stonehedge number five states, "For several lots, including lot number seven, they are not approved for construction or placement of dwelling units by the Health Department at this time and shall not be considered until such time that access to a suitable sewage treatment and/or disposable facility is provided." These lots are marked with an asterisk on the recorded plat, and lot number seven is marked with an asterisk. In closing, I respectfully request that the Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission deny the improper subdivision of lot number seven in Stonehedge number five. Since municipal sewage treatment facilities are not available for this lot, the subdivision of this lot is clearly prohibited by the recorded plat of Stonehedge number five. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Thank you.
The second person who signed up is Brian Freeman.
John Freeman.
Okay. Number three is, I think it looks like Judy Cook.
John.
John, okay. Anthony McCray?
I, I think I'm on the wrong one.
I think you are. I think I know which one is next to the property that you own, I believe. Yeah, so this is not the right one. We'll call, I'll let, I'll let them know when yours is up. Yes, sir.
Mr. Acker, please.
Stan Acker. I'm Tuscaloosa County Commissioner for District One, where this is located, and my address is one-five-seven-one-five Cove Circle in Northport. My question, we, the county staff met with the city staff and worked on this, and we're just a little perplexed as to why this was continued and why you're considering continuing again, because it's pretty clear this can't, this development, or, excuse me, this subdivision can't proceed according to what's on the plat, as best we understand it. I've talked with county engineer too, and we, we don't really know how this could proceed. So, go for it. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Sure. Thank you very much. All right. petitioner, any rebuttal?
Can I, may I ask something first, because I'm, I'm really confused too. I'm not even sure we have jurisdiction over something like this. I don't know whether it's legal to make a note like is on this already recorded plat. I have no idea. Jimbo may enlighten us. But if, if that was with, outside the purview of the commission that approved the plat with that note, then the proper place, in my opinion, would be a court. And I just don't see how, to me, it's, we can't approve this. Maybe I'm, you know, where's the hand down there?
Sewage has got to be defined.
I can't, I just can't, I don't know what the proper recourse is, unless it does go to the circuit court.
You know, and then some people say covenants, you know, run out if you don't, if you don't write a note extending them out, you know, there's that, that issue too. I mean, I don't know if that's true or if they've ever been enforced before, but, but even still, the use, the use of, the use here is not something we govern, right? This is just simply the real estate subdivision, and, and the, and the original developer wrote, wrote in and had it, had the, I mean, I'm with you there. I mean, I don't see why we would even take it up. I mean, we're just going to make ourselves party to a lawsuit, right?
I mean, I don't know when it was approved. We may, we may have been the commission that approved it. I don't know when it was, when this was done. I mean, Stonehedge has been around a long time.
Terry Waters said nineteen eighty.
So, apparently, there's a lot of questions concerning this that we will need answered prior to coming back, but if you want to rebut anything that's said, fine, or if you just want to request a draw.
I would rebut the fact that she's had three different PERC tests done on lot seven, antiseptic system installed, so that met that requirement. It's time that the septic rules in nineteen seventy are not the same as they are in two thousand and twenty-four and twenty-five. And as far as that note goes, that note is on multiple plaits, and it would seem that that note is a Health Department-derived note, and it's on multiple subdivisions from the seventies, it's on multiple subdivisions on the lake, and it's on multiple developments with, large developments with PERC tests on them. That was a note that the Health Department forwarded to have placed on the subdivision plat. Even at last month's meeting, S-84 and S-86, I believe, were approved by this board with the same note on those plaits. So.
Well, so, are you still asking for a continuance?
Yes, we are.
We're only addressing one, and that's yours.
We're going to present it in a different manner.
So staff, or commission, let's, just minimal discussion. Obviously, there's a lot of question amongst the commissioners, some who have a legal background, obviously. And I would hope that before this gets back to us, if it gets back to us, next time, this thing is well-vetted and the answers are made clear to this commission, so that either we have a legal right to hear.
Yes.
Or it's not legal to be presented.
No, no problem.
So I would appreciate you getting the staff and working through this. Commission before us, we have, where were we? S-8524, Stonehedge number six, asking for a continuance. I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, may I ask one other question before we go? And, Mr. Woodson, this is to you. Does this commission have the authority to review a plat and possibly, with the right evidence or whatever, remove conditions?
I think they have to follow any plat, go through, like, the training sample.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Unless it's some illegal provision, some, I mean, something, still all that is absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Staff?
All right. Moving into our cases to be heard. Will you give me a click on there, Mr. Pines? Thank you. So starting off with our preliminary plaits here, we have S-1025, Spring Hill Village Re-Survey, a re-survey of lot one, Spring Hill Village and unplatted land. This is a reconfiguration of two existing lots on approximately point nine acres, located at and around forty-nine oh eight Thirty-Sixth Avenue East. This is Council District Seven. You can see here, we're kind of between the neighborhood Walmart and Southview Elementary School. You can see those two lots today. Moving into the plat with contours, you can see that lot line on the southern parcel moving north with this reconfiguration. You can see the plat here again without contours. They are requesting a variance from lot configuration. We did not receive any public comment on this request. Do you have any questions for staff?
Any question? Okay. petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Al Kavnis with Kavnis Engineering, representing Patricia Pinto and the Saco Stanfield Estate. They own the two lots there that are currently platted, lot line here. Notice the fence there. This, this, this house is a rental house, there's like a long-term tenant in there. The idea is to reconfigure the lot so that the tenant keeps the yard there accustomed to having the fenced-in yard there. So we're moving this lot line to this location. It requires the configuration variance because now the lot line technically jogs, so.
Okay.
But other than that, that's it.
All right. Staff, any issues with the variance request, lot configuration? No. Commission before us, we have S-10-25, Spring Hill Village Re-Survey, with one variance request, lot configuration. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, beginning with Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is another preliminary plat. This is S-1125, Springbrook Commons, a re-survey of lots thirty-four through thirty-five and parts of lots fifty-five through fifty-six, Springbrook subdivision. This is consisting of five lots on approximately five point six acres, locate at thirty-four through fifty-seven, Springbrook. This is Council District Seven. You can see here, we're just south of the Buffalo Wild Wings, zooming in on the property here, looking at the plat, just to note that this corner property is not included in the subdivision. As you can see, they're proposing five lots, and looking at the plat without contours. Here's a preliminary site plan for what the spaces might look like, including coffee shop, restaurants, medical offices. We did not receive, oh, excuse me, first, we have two variance requests. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff? We did not receive, oh, excuse me, first, we have two variance requests. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Did we not already approve this one?
We approved the overall re-annex session, or re-zoning of this, is that correct?
Yeah, it was discussed during framework.
Not subdivision.
Okay.
So I think that's what they're asked for, subdivided. Thank you. Tishner?
Commission again, Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates here tonight representing RSCC Group with this request, taking approximately two dozen existing lots, re-subdividing into the five lots you see here. On the one variance, to expand on what Leo just said about the sidewalk variance, we're just deferring the construction of those sidewalks, not asking for a complete waiver. And we intend to put a bond in place with Mr. Gardner's office.
Say that one more time, Jimmy, you're.
We're not asking for a complete waiver of sidewalk construction. The sidewalks will be constructed along with improvements for each lot.
Okay.
We're okay with that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone here to speak to, for, or against this petition? Alright, staff, variance, we talked about that, lot configuration and sidewalks and, you're good with it? Alright, commission before us, we have S dash eleven dash two-five, Spring Brook Commons, lots thirty-four through thirty-five and fifty-five through fifty-six, Spring Brook subdivision, with two variance requests, lot configuration and sidewalks. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Motion second. Ms. Hornby, again, Ms. Hornby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Alright.
Alright, our next preliminary plat is S thirteen twenty-five, Rock Creek Acres Phase Three. This has been renamed now to Snyder Acres. This is consisting of five lots on approximately a hundred and twenty acres located on D Cunningham Road, southeast of McLean Farm Road and west of Watermelon Road. This is not in city limits. You can see, we're way north here, north of the North River Yacht Club. You can see that property today. Looking at the plat, you can see it's gonna be a five-lot subdivision, zooming in on the right side here into Lot One and Two. For the other three lots, it'll be broken up by the road network on the north of Lot One and Two. Here's that plat again without contours. We have four variance requests for this petition. We did receive one public comment regarding this petition. Do you have any questions for staff?
Love this time. Tishner?
Kevin Hinkle, Montgomery Hinkle Inc., two oh three Harbor Road East, representing Westerveld and Mr. Snyder. Mr. Snyder approached Westerveld about purchasing ten acres from them, and they agreed. And the ten acres comes out of a hundred and twenty acres by parcel, which created the large subdivision that you see here. And I believe his plans are to build a family residence for his sister or some family member on Lot Two.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak for or against this? We do, we did have one email that was sent to us that's been entered into the records, is that correct? Bring up the four variance requests, please. Commission before us, we have S thirteen dash twenty-five, Rock Creek Acres, Phase Three, or Snyder Acres, with three or four variance requests, lot configuration, half-street improvement, sidewalk construction, cap sewers. Staff, any issues with any of these variances?
No, sir.
No issues from staff? Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Vote, beginning with Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries.
Next up is S fourteen twenty-five, a preliminary plat for the Riley subdivision. This is consisting of five lots on approximately ten point two acres located at and around three thousand through three thousand eighteen, Fifty-Second Court. This is not in city limits. You can see, we're between the Dollar General and Oakdale Elementary School. Zooming in on the property today, you can see there's some existing structures that'll be placed on individual lots, as you can see in the plat with contours here and without contours. We have six variance requests for this. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Where's the Dollar General?
You can see down here off of Foster's Ferry.
Okay.
Thank you. Tishner?
Robert McPherson, private practice land surveyor on the, at forty-one twenty-one Vassy Drive, Tuscaloosa. I'm here on the behalf of the heirs of the Riley heirs of this particular property. And their position is to divide everything up, and they've got buyers for part of it. And the Lot Five will not be configured that way in the end because they finally got all the title work worked out, and it's been deeded over to the Riley family now. So, it'll, it'll be changed. That little small block on the back will be out, will be gone.
Which one are you talking about, Lot Five, down at the bottom?
One to the south, southeast end, yeah.
Mike, any issues with?
So, can you kind of tell me what's gonna change on Lot Five?
Oh, I got it.
They, on Lot Five down there, the portion that's to the west, the little small portion, is gonna be taken away, and the only portion that'll be left will be the, the east portion of it.
So, all of the on-site system will still stay on Lot Five?
Yes, it will.
Okay, so that, that, that little rectangle on the back will just become a part of Lot One?
Yeah, it'll become part of Lot One, yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess are we going from a five-lot subdivision to a four-lot subdivision now?
No, it's to be five lots.
It's to be five. So it's staying, maintaining the existing property line?
Right.
Mike, you alright with it?
Now Lot One does, will not be any development on it. At this time, the, the person who's buying it is gonna use it for his, storage of his construction equipment.
Anything else?
That's it.
Alright, anybody here to speak to, for, or against this? Ma'am, come up, state your, state your name and address for the record, please.
Vanessa Knox. I live at three zero zero one Fifty-Second Court. Yes, and I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I, I, I was told that it's, it's gonna be more of a business other than a subdivision. I don't have a problem with a subdivision, but far as a business, that's gonna be trucks running in and out. It's our, it's children on that road, and across the way from my little section is Fifty-Second Court on Thirty-first Street. That is the city. So, that's a small area in that Fifty-Second Court. And when I bought that, it was, it just supposed to have been a subdivision area, not a business. You have other industrial parks in the back of the Chevron off Cover Road, where Dollar General is and Cover Road. You have industrial park going that way. You have industrial parks going towards the toll bridge in that area, and you also have industrial parks behind the BF Goodrich. So, it's my understanding why you can't build your business in those industrial parks instead of going into a subdivision area. Because I know when the mayor started this revitalization plan of the Western Cluster, it didn't include that type of business.
Are you in the city, Ms. Knox?
What's the current zoning for the property?
So it is out of city limits. So just, everything north of Thirty-first Street, until you get closer to Joe Malasham on the left of your screen, is not in city limits.
Okay.
Bring back the overall site plan, please, about, regards to the location.
And while he's still in there. Ms. Knox, are you in the city limits?
No, I'm in Fifty-Second Court, which they told me is the county.
It's still in the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I didn't know if that property on that side of Fifty-Second was in the city limits or not. Okay.
That kind of blue line, if this is right on Thirty-second, or Thirty-first, everything south this way and this way is in the city.
So this is, we, we recently had a case in this vicinity, right? Was that last, where was that at, in the relationship?
I think it was closer to Joe Malasham. I don't, do you remember exactly where that was?
But it was on, it was on that side of Joe Malasham, wasn't it? Wasn't it? Very close to this. Yeah. That's where they wanted to put the, the, the office supply place, is that correct? And so this one, okay. Tishner?
I believe there, there are some others that want to speak. Mr. McCaw?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, look, I need to see if anybody else wants to speak. I apologize for that.
Good afternoon to the Plant and Zone Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a property owner of fifty-two, fifty-nine, twenty-two, Thirty-first Street. This property petition in particular that he's speaking about, number five, it landlocks my property on the backside. I do not favor this petition, along with Mrs. Knox and some others who are here, who did not get a chance to properly sign the forms back there because some kind of way we got mixed up about the, the, the proper labor. But I have problems with this particular thing, and yes, the last time we were here, the property was right across the street, across Case Road that you were, you were speaking about. With this same type of petition, the only thing is, we have a new vendor who is coming down Fifty-seventh Court, doing the same thing and asking for a line eraser, a property line eraser that will, will, will combine all that particular property together. Let me say this, in his points that he brings out, he has a series of variance that he's asking for. I'd like to take my perspective on the point of what you call half-street improvement. Half-street improvement to me means that you can basically do only one side of the street. You can only put one sidewalk there. But what would that do for the aesthetics of the, of the environment? Certainly, you wouldn't want to see that. It, it might mean an upgrade for lighting just on one side. That's exactly what half-street improvement is, is half. It, it does not take in account the whole picture that the mayor of this city and you all are trying to paint for this, this new covered road. Water sewer is coming down, it's gonna upgrade things. The county stepped in to save that particular, vouch for us because the city wasn't gonna put the money there. Well, if the county's gonna do all this good stuff for water and sewer, now we're gonna allow a petition to come in and ask for variances that's gonna allow them to come down on a fifty-foot street road and put sidewalk maybe on one side and not on the other one. And in order to put it on the other one, you got to ask all these property owners to, to dedicate some of their narrow front walkway, a yard for a walkway. What would that do for the elderly? What would that do for the young children? Certainly, it adds endangerment to the, to the neighborhood. What would it do for the community? It, it provides no benefit at all. And so, as far as half-street improvement that they are asking for, all the things that they are asking for in half-street improvement, they are petitioning at a later time to actually try to get those things done. But as you know, if something's not in place already, if they're not enjoying sidewalks already, if they're not enjoying lighting already, we got a history already that this, this area is dilapidated to add five lots down there. That's gonna be either mound system or water system problem. And I understand that you, we're predicting that in May, in March, in May, that the water system is coming through. They may or may not can get on this system. If they can get on this system, it's glorious. If not, then all of a sudden, we got a mound system problem. So there are just too many variables that's clouding this whole thing. There's too many safety hazard for the elderly in there, for the pre-existing neighbors in there. You know, it's, it's just a blind, it's a blind date. And, and this is not what picture that I think that you're supposed to come before the Plant and Zone Board and ask them to approve of. Everything that I ever came to the Plant and Zone Board for, and myself, is I had to paint clear pictures. And this is not a clear picture. First of all, of course, there have been other people that wants to buy this same land. They got turned down. I, I offered to buy it a two acres behind myself so I can get on land law. But, but if you keep passing over everybody who was willing to buy it, and you're bringing in a new entity that want to turn it into, maybe they'll go industrial, maybe they'll stay, but it's just step one that say letters divided for residential reason. But you know that's gonna interfere in another petition right here. It's gonna change. It's gonna go from parking a piece of equipment to doing what you want with your equipment. Even I believe in you do what you want, but you got to do it inside of the parameter that the city gives you. You have to do it, you have to do it as to aesthetics about how is this gonna make it look? And how is this gonna be feasible not to just a private individual, but to the community at large? What benefit would it add? I thank you for listening to me. I have more to say, but I understand what you're saying. But I would like to ask you all to look this again and understand that this is just another plan, just like the Case Post Road with the wood product. It's the same thing. I believe in infrastructure. I believe in improvement, but when infrastructure is gonna end up being a liability to either the municipality or the city don't want to build, and the county's not gonna want to build, when the roads tow up and it's a one-sided street improvement, they're only obligated to fix one side of that road.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
May I have, can I, may I ask a couple of questions? I'm sorry, sir. And I didn't catch your name. I'm sorry to just call you, sir. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I know the last time some property came up around your house, you were, you, one of your concerns was that it was, would make you landlock. Would you explain to me sort of, because I don't, you are on Thirty-first Street East, Case Road?
Yes, ma'am. If you see the three particular, the, the, yes, okay. That back line right there is, is clearly my back line law. The right line right there where they got the arrow, they are asking to erase that line and combine that whole section. I believe the gentleman refers to it as what, Section Five?
Well, Lot One.
I don't think, I don't think that's the case. I don't think that's the case.
But you can still get out on Thirty-first Street East, correct?
I, I can, on Thirty-first Street, but I have no, nothing on the back or side, left or right that I can go. And that's the only reason why I said to, said to the board, there are people that offer to buy, in particular, offer to buy that particular one. But I was, I was commenting on even, all of it's my neighborhood. So, I was commenting on a fifty-foot strip with a half-street improvement, and you're asking to update just halfway something to piecework something, which is what half-street means. It's piecework is to do what it does.
Mr. McKay, I think, I think the petitioner's asking for a variance not to do that at this time. But he's not wanting to do that. He's, he's wanting a variance to not do the half-street improvements, which are typically required when we do a subdivision. So.
Obviously, my paperwork, it, it states something else. It says number two, asking for a variance for a half-street.
A variance, a variance is for him not to perform that, that work.
Okay, and, but still, i- if we allow him to move property lines, then that jeopardize. then that jeopardize my private investment, which me and my partner, we formed a subdivision. And, and that's the reason why it's entitled Thomas McKay Subdivision. Well, to, to aid him and to hurt me would not be justification, and I sit in my seat and say nothing.
So let me staff while he's up here, show, show me where his property is. Is it those two parcels right there, Lot, Lot Two?
Flag kind of.
So it's the flag lot only and Lot, not the Lot Two there?
And this, yeah.
So that is his too? So that, that basically, and then there's that sliver that's not.
This is not his right here.
So, let's tell you, I, I, he's asking what the, what the, and again, I can't, I don't know what he's proposing to do with this land, uh, land use. The land currently is not in the city limits, so right now, he's, he can do whatever he wants to do. All that I think that the petitioner is asking is to carve out those four lots to subdivide and then have that one large lot. Maybe in preparation to do, maybe in preparation not to do, can't answer that. This, this commission with it out of the city and in the county doesn't have jurisdiction on what he does. He can, he can do whatever, this owner can do whatever he wants to do right now on this lot, because it, it's not, it's not, it's not zoned. That, that, you understand that?
Yes, sir. What I have spoken to Mr. Riley about, and he and I have good conversations, and we have, we, 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 we have good ties as to communication. And he knows of my previous interest in the land for four, five years, is we talk about moving that divide line and that become a whole thing. Also, just like Ms. Knox says, you know, it, it, it's versed and voiced that a construction company has full intentions of putting construction in there. And whether we face that today or at a later date, it is going to happen.
Well, again, it, with, with, currently, whether we subdivide it or not, he has the right to do that. It'd be a non-zoned in the county.
Yes, I just feel like that, thank you for allowing me to speak, but I just feel like commu- that community at large, it, it brings no benefit to the community at large, and I, I was under impression that when things come before the board, it not, it should not just benefit one person or one entity. I was under impression that it should, the aesthetics of it should count, the, the, the benefit to the community at large should be, get some reverence out of it. There should be some appreciation from, from the planning zone to the community.
I'm going to chime in here real quick, so if we want to continue, y'all need to make a vote to allow Mr. McKay some more time.
I'm, I'm, I think we've heard enough, I think we understand your position, we appreciate it, thank you very much. Listener, you want to respond to?
Is anyone else, we want to make sure no one else is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, does anyone here else speak for or against this petition? Okay. Come, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Bolden, I live at Three Zero Zero, seven, Fifty Second Court, Tuscaloosa.
Give me your name again, please.
Bruce Edward Bolden Senior.
Okay, Bruce.
I heard a lot what he said, my only concern is, I, like you say, you can't stop them from selling that property. My only concern is, it's, it's right across the street from my house. But if you allow them to sell it, that's no problem. But what do you do to stop it from putting a construction company behind all these houses? Because ain't that going to make the value of our house, our property go down? That's what I'm asking.
But, so, again, this, this property is in the county, this is, this is the city.
I got you.
We, we would have no rights or, they can, within, within the reins of a few different things, they can do just about anything they want to with this property. Now, that being said, all he's asking for again is subdividing the houses outside this, out, out, outside of the bounds of the property that he's got.
No problem. Okay, for instance, say he sells the van, say he sells the land.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we come back here, if the guy decides to put a construction company on that property, we face this again, that's all I'm asking.
If, 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 if they want to be annexed into the city, yes. If they want to further subdivide it, yes. But as it stands now, with the one size that it is, no.
So if he sell it, what you're saying, long as it stays in the county, he do as he please whoever sell it to it, they do as they please on that property?
If they make modifications, yes.
Okay.
If he can meet the health department standards for like a septic tank or whatever, he can do just about anything.
Uh, he, he, he can get water, but he can't get city sewer. They have to use a septic tank on this property. And if he passes the septic, if they, if they have toilet facilities and they need a septic tank, he does have to meet the health department standard.
Okay, and that doesn't go just for him, that goes for, for anyone, anyone in the area that's in the county. We don't have jurisdiction over really what they do. Only, only the platting of the subdivision lots is all we're involved in right now.
I, I get, I get it, I, if I'm in that vicinity, I don't want a construction company next to me either. But right now, we don't have the jur- that jurisdiction over.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else here speak for or against this? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Solomon Bolden, I live at thirty twenty-one, Fifty Second Court. I clearly understand what you're saying, that it's not zoned by, by the city, but I was thinking about when he gets back there and totally into a building, the chaos, the road, the, the traffic. So if the city can't have to do anything about it, guess somebody with the county would adjust it with.
The county would have the jurisdiction under that.
Okay, well, I understand how the, what the city stands, go by, my street is only about a hundred and twenty feet long, but it's all that's the county, but outside, where I cut over my street is city.
Right.
I can do it differently. So I guess if it looks at the county.
How far, how far is the city sewer, how far is the city sewer?
I think sewer's not far, it's, 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 I, I know Caterpillar Place is right down the road, I know it might be the closest place on, on Malacham. I know that there has been some sewer expanded east of, east of the Cat Place, because there's another development going, looking at going down there, so.
And the water table's fairly high in that area, correct?
Very much so.
So if, if you wanted to put a company with a lot of employees there, you would probably have to have a large septic tank or mound system, or if you wanted to connect to the city, you would have to annex in, and then you would be under our jurisdiction. But presently, you could probably run a small outfit, probably as is, I mean, or maybe with a small septic system.
Anyone else here speak to, for, or against this? All right. Ms. McPherson, any rebuttal?
The only understanding.
Obviously, you hear the concerns of the adjacent landowners.
Now, I'll speak to the man that's buying the property and possibly get him to come directly off Thirty Fifth Street instead of getting on Fifty Second Court, therefore not having any truck traffic on that roadway. If there is any truck traffic at all, I don't know, I don't even know what kind of equipment the gentleman has, I just know that he has a construction business. He may build houses, he may build roads, I don't know. But from what I understand, he's a, he just wants this particular piece of property for a place to maintain his equipment, or keep his equipment, yeah.
Staff? Any, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Wrong point on this one, right?
Yeah, I mean, what's, what's before you tonight is just the subdivision, and the use is kind of not, it doesn't play into this situation.
Thank you. Bring back up the variances, please. I think there was a bunch of them, all right. All right, any, any discussion amongst the commission regarding this?
I would just like to say to the residents, I, I know this area, and like you said, the water table in this area is high, but I, I want to make sure that we're clear that this, this is not annexed into the city, which if it was, then we would have more regulations over what could be placed there. And then that would be the time that you can come back and talk about all of the industrial property around it and the businesses already surrounding your properties. But this is just removing some lot lines, correct? That's all we doing is just removing lot lines, it's not in the city. So the county, they have their own regulations, that's different from the city, and they can do as they please on this property already. So I do encourage you to give it to your county commission in this area to talk to them about the businesses. But I do like what the petitioner was saying, that he would try to find out from the potential buyers about the access to the roads on Fifty Second Court, and I think that's fair. But I do think you need to take it to the county commission, your concerns, that would be the more appropriate place to have that discussion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, commission before us, we have S dash fourteen dash twenty-five Riley Subdivision, consisting of five lots and approximately ten point two acres, with five variance requests, that being drainage study, right-of-way dedication, lot configuration, half-street improvement, sidewalk construction, and cap sewer. That would be actually six variance requests instead of five. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion curious.
Thank you very much.
All righty, next up, we are moving into a rezoning request, this is Z oh five twenty-five. Eddie Thompson and George Lake petitioned to rezone approximately point one seven acres, located at Fifteen Fourteen Third Avenue from MR two to NC, this is Council District Two. You can see here, we're right off of Fifteenth Street between Forest Lake and Central High School. And zooming in on the property, you can see it's MR two today, surrounded by MR two and near some GC off of Fifteenth Street. Here's that property from above, you can see it's a singular structure today. And just for some added context, here's what that structure looked like in twenty nineteen from Google. Uh, the petition is to rezone from MR two to NC to allow for an insurance company to operate at this location. Here's a preliminary site plan for what that business may look like at this site. Getting into our analysis, in the twenty twenty-one Framework Comprehensive Plan, this does conform to the plan, this rezoning request, in terms of use. This does meet that small office commercial that is a secondary use in that traditional neighborhood core future land use character. Here again is just that future land use character map, you can see it is traditional neighborhood core. Here are our permitted uses for NC highlighted, moving through that table. We did not receive any public comment for this request, do you have any questions for staff?
Back up to the permit, the original permitted uses. All right.
But that's all?
Back, back out to the, the aerial, please.
Was that all, John, I thought there were more than that.
Overall aerial, there we go. So, Zach, you were, I don't think Miss Coines here when this, this very lot came before, so was the one north, to the north of that?
Yes, so the lot itself, these petitioners have come before y'all to request, these petitioners have come before y'all to request a rezoning in our old code, to BGO, which was recommended for approval. They never went to city council to finalize that rezoning request. Within that period, their time elapsed, and so now they are back before you guys.
Is the property to the north commercial or residential?
So this property, previously, when y'all looked at it, if you go to the future land use character map, actually, you can see that this actually was, so Alabama, it's owned by Alabama Hearing Aid, the center of Alabama Hearing Aid.
The one that you, that you marked?
Yeah, this one right here, just above this property.
Is it currently commercial?
So it is not, so it was zoned BGO at the time, before Framework, and we corrected that during Framework. I believe we discussed it during one of our meetings, but it's been operating as a home for close to a decade, and people have been living in it, and so in order to correct that, we rezoned it back to.
I need, you know, I'm subbing in here, okay, I need a yes or no answer. Is it currently, is currently, is currently zoned residential?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And so, we're not creating an island here?
It would be somewhat of an island, yeah, it would be, there would be a gap between GC, and then you got your M two zoning for that residential property.
Basically, your, what your, the future land map, character map is, is basically what we work from, but right now, it's currently residential, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
So to summarize, circumstances have definitely changed since the last time you heard this petition.
All right, thank you.
All right, what color will?
It'll be pink.
All right.
So you don't even see that.
I'm going to get used to all the terminology and everything. So, right now, the red is like, I would say corridor commercial. I don't know what our new lingo is, but I know Fifteenth Street is a corridor, so, okay. And then, okay, south of that, the kind of mustard color, that's going to be?
Mixed residential, so this is, this color here is residential, this is residential. Obviously, you have Fifteenth, which is your main corridor, so you've got university commercial, general commercial, which is similar to our corridor commercial previously. This is, I think, an apartment complex. So, yeah, I mean, a rezoning to NC, which is what they're requesting, would somewhat be a, you know, spot zoning, as you'd say. They do have options of requesting a special exception or a variance from, you know, from zoning board of adjustment if the rezoning was not to be approved. There's, there's other opportunities to maybe operate a.
Well, I, I guess from my, from our standpoint, my concern is, again, the, the precedence that we've tried to establish here in working through this process, I mean, the climate has changed, obviously, since this was originally, originally looked at, especially in this area, because of some additional projects, and, I mean, it may be.
So, Zach, so if they go to the zoning board of adjustments and get what you said as?
I believe it's going to be, we discussed that, it's going to be a variance request, which they'd have to provide a hardship, so.
So at that point?
A little bit tougher of a.
So if it ceases to be, if they allow it, and it ceases to be, it stays mustard color, it stays the MR two?
That's right.
So that's the safest thing to do at this point, correct?
It would be, yes, sir.
Because otherwise, it'd be spot zoned. And then we open up a can of worms with next petition of that laws.
You mean, they're going to go in front of the border, no?
See, that's the, that's the other problem. Okay, but now, special exception, if they were, if they could get a special exception, that would be allowable, that would not necessarily pass to a prospective purchaser, correct?
So it would, yeah, it would not be a special exception request, it'd be a variance request for this one.
So, yeah, it would not change.
That's just almost like rezoning it, in my opinion, because it, it, it will pass on to any prospective purchaser.
I think what we're going to have to ask ourselves as a community, I think last month or the month before, we had a business that, that, that located in this red, yet the demand for that business, I think it was membing pizzas, you know, and they had like fifty delivery people, and they were going to impact the people in the mustard color materially. And I think, I think we're, on the one hand, wanting to promote business in the commercial quarter, on the other hand, we've got creep that's going on, like, it's almost unfair to subject someone in the mustard color to the business that's going on in front of them, which, which is certainly legal to have, but, but it may devalue them in such a way that, that they need to become part of the red. And I think that's what we're, we're going to have to ask ourselves, it may be a lunch meeting that we have to have and discuss this, to talk about the future policy of almost the entire block, because where do you draw the line? Probably at the next street, I mean, really.
Yeah, and honestly, through the framework process, this is where we identi- this is where you, you and then city council ultimately identified, that's where the line is drawn essentially of commercial creeping into that residential portion.
I've got a lot over here, a couple of blocks over, and Starbucks is going in front of it. Well, that, that, that seems okay to me, but every time I go by Starbucks on campus, they have twenty cars backed up. So they may be backing up in front of me, I don't know if they have enough spaces to not back up in front of me. And if they do, then it could actually devalue. And if they do, then it could actually devalue, I mean, it, it may lead to a bigger conversation for all of us as it relates to all these houses in here. And the neighborhood, remember, came two months ago, and they were mad because they didn't, they didn't want to see us do this, but it's, it's almost inevitable we have this conversation.
I, I echo those sentiments to Mr. Rumsey. Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm not, you know, we did not like spot zoning when we were going through framework. I'm not in favor of spot zoning, so I guess I just need to hear from the petitioner on this.
All right. Uh, petitioner?
George Lake, thirty-two twenty Cherokee Road. So, we'll be operating a insurance company here. There will not be twenty-five cars in the parking lot. I'm not sure when the last time you saw your insurance agent, but we don't expect to have that much traffic. Uh, the reason why there was delay in us doing this is we got the requirements from Zach and his folks for the cutting of trees, for sidewalks, for paving, uh, to do the necessary things to make sure it's up to code and so to say. So, that was our delay. Want to make sure that spending that money was economically viable to, uh, before I bought the, bought the property, so.
Were you approved at that meeting?
We were. Yeah, we were. There's a lot more conversation than I anticipated about this stuff, um, but I understand.
I wish you, I wish you'd run up there and had it plotted, then you wouldn't be having this conversation.
Yeah, I, I'm realizing that. So, yeah, so we're going to improve the property and, uh, putting up opaque fence, paving the parking lot, cutting trees, and, um, we will not have that much traffic there, but.
But, Mr. Lake, if you, if you, uh, if we allow you to do this, this is our position, if we allow you to do this, let's just say you sell it, you know? Ten, twenty, not, we can't predict what happens tomorrow. We have to be, we have to look at what happens tomorrow.
Sure.
So, if you're not there, if somebody comes and puts a Starbucks there, it's already zoned for that.
I get it.
Can you, can you understand our position in terms of that?
Yeah.
Why, why we're having this conversation? Which is not so much that we are against what you're doing.
Right.
But we have to look out what, what the potential of the next person coming in.
And we've had no, and we met with the homeowners association in Forest Lake, and they, um, gave us their concerns, but they had no really objection for us to doing this, so.
You say you met with the Forest Lake homeowners association?
We did.
And they, did they approve this?
They, they did. They hadn't, they did not show up to, for any opposition.
Oh.
Uh, but they did say, you know, we probably met with fifteen, maybe ten, fifteen people, and probably two dissented, uh, and the rest were either four or.
Well, that's, that's the two we would hear from.
Well, they're not, yeah.
Uh, you know, Mr. Blake, I, I, well, I tell you, I, as Mr. Dooley says, this one, this one's hard for us to, to go forth with. I, because of the precedent that it sets for us and, and sending, doing what I do for a living and telling you to go back through more red tape with the city, I hate to say that you need to go back through more red tape with the city. But your best opportunity, in my opinion, is based on the conversation that we had, is going through the zoning board of adjustments and getting that approval to operate. That allows you and you only to operate within the confines of that. And I, I would think at this point, am I right, Dina? You say that variance carries on with you?
Right.
But if they, if you agree to the parking variance that you have, the, the, the current parking lot and such, that variance would carry on and would protect that potential Starbucks or whatever major impact to the, to the existing neighborhood.
George, George, did you say that there is, the Hearing Aid Center is next door to you?
It is, and it was commercial the last time I stood here.
Okay.
Well, I thought it was drawn. I thought it was the mustard color.
Because it, it's, it's missed.
It was zoned commercial but operating as residential.
As a residential.
For multiple, for like a decade previously, from what.
So, did it revert back to residential by that?
So, we reverted it back to residential from a zoning perspective.
Look, I, 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 I really don't want to be, I wish Bill was here, so he'd be telling you that, not me tonight. I promise you that, but I mean, I, I'm, I feel for you, but I don't know that we can do anything unless.
Yeah.
But in the short term, we'll be improving the property, and there will be very little traffic. And, um, Mr. Do that, I, I don't see us selling this property for quite a while, but I understand your, your concern. But when I look up at the map and I see the red going like this.
Yeah.
I, I, you know.
So, George, are, are your customers, are the, are your tenants' customers, are they going to park in the driveway that's shown? And the employees will park in the back?
You know, the employees, yeah, employees would park in the back, probably, and I can't see us having that much traffic, but they'll, they can park, there's one parking place in the front, but they can certainly park in the back, too. It's perfectly fine.
And Mr. Lake, don't get, don't get confused. I do understand that, with the business that you're operating, I understand it will be low traffic. I definitely understand that part of it, but I'm looking long-term, you know?
Yeah, we're putting up the fence to, we say, to protect us from the renters.
I, 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 I'm going to say, uh, commission, I mean, staff, understanding the climate, we're telling, is it better for him to withdraw? Or is it better for us to go through the process and then him go through?
I would say, you know, you can make a recommendation, and then he can pursue council if he, if he decides, maybe he can weigh that, whether or not you had recommended to approve or recommend to deny. If he withdraws, then there's really no, I mean, always, his only request is going to be this, you know? There's not really any other request that he can come up to the table with, I would assume.
If, if, if we, if he withdraws, that's his only option, or if we vote him down, that's his only option.
It's a great test case.
Well, it's, it's a recommendation to city council.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Call for the vote.
Yeah, I, I think we probably ought to call for the vote, and then it go.
You're not going to have a chance with those.
All right, let me, let me ask for any other, any other comments, okay? Any other comments? I'm bored. We'll let you, we'll give you the opportunity to give a vote.
I'm back. Linda Parsons, um, to Forest Lake Drive. I'm the president of the Forest Lake Neighborhood Association, and, uh, Mr. Lake and Mr. Thompson both, uh, met with several of us, uh, at the time of the original request. And it is true that the board at that time was, uh, somewhat conflicted. Some people understood the situation, uh, and appreciated it, others were concerned and expressed that. So, we did not take a position at that time, uh, and a couple of things have changed since then. Um, and our, we oppose this at this time as a board in our entirety and, um, have the support of several neighborhood residents. Our opposition is twofold, and one is spot zoning, which was not the case last time. Um, it came to our attention that what had been the Hearing Aid Center was being used as a residence and had been for a very, very, very long time, indicating that that, that's what the demand is, because the owner had the opportunity to put a business in and did not. So, we were concerned about that. And the other concern that we have is what we call zoning creep. I think Mr. Rumsey used that term, uh, a moment ago. So, uh, the request for this change last time, last year, was used by another petitioner on Fifth Avenue to justify a, a request for a rezoning to commercial, and that was a successful request in the fifteen hundred block of Fifth Avenue, and that was multiple properties. And we call it zoning creep because one zoning change begets another. Somebody says, well, if that one can be changed, so can this one as well, and it's used to, um, uh, to rationalize making, uh, changes. And we are concerned that we'll start to see these property requests for rezoning, uh, increase if this is approved. Uh, and I'd like to add that for several years and without much notice from outsiders, Forest Lake has developed in many very positive ways. Uh, specifically, we've seen a significant increase in the number of homeowners who are purchasing and renovating homes for their own use. Uh, we're seeing a, an increase in the number of people who are building for their own use, and also people who are leasing to non-students, to families, and others who are, um, working near downtown or at the university. Um, and we are concerned that if we start to see this zoning creep, more businesses start to come to the interior, uh, that that progress, uh, will be halted. Uh, so thank you for your, uh, time tonight.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lake, I, 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 let me ask, let me ask, not, hang on, any, anybody else want to speak for or against this case? Mr. Lake, I told you that I'd call you back up, and I'm, I'm going to do that, but I, I think you, um, understand our thought process now and where we're at and where, where we, what our obligation is, because again, we've, we've set, we've set the precedent where, while the part of the property she discussed was, was zoned, it still touched additional commercial right next to it. This does not currently, so that's kind of our predicament with this one. So, our only recourse, your only force on this is going to be go for the zoning board adjustments.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. All right, um, anything else?
Yeah, I mean.
He can still call for the vote.
We can, we can still either.
I'm going, I'm going to call for the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm going to call for the vote.
I thought you meant that he couldn't go to the city council.
No, no, he can still, he can still go to the city council. This, this is, goes as a recommendation to the city council. So, you can still go and plead your case to the city council. We're not the final authority on this. Thank you. All right. So, uh, all right. Do staff, anything else? Okay. Commission before us, we have Z dash zero five dash two five, uh, rezone petition, uh, from MR two to NC. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
Wait. Yes. What is the motion?
Motion is to approve it for, uh, for neighborhood business.
Okay, motion is to approve, okay? Ms. Prince?
No.
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 No. Motion will go as no recommendation to city council.
We're a bunch of Indian givers.
All right.
All right, commission, we're moving into our first companion case of tonight. This is the Hidden Oaks subdivision. It's three parts here. You can see there's an annexation, zoning requests, and subdivision requests. We'll start with the annexation. This is A, A N O three twenty-five, annexing approximately nineteen point two three acres located east of New Watermelon and south of seven four one five New Watermelon Road. You can see here, we're just south of the North River Yacht Club, near the lake. Uh, zooming in on that property today, you can see it's vacant land. Uh, zooming in, you can see that area to be annexed in that dashed line in red. Uh, so the petition, the applicant is requesting the annex in the city limits for a new residential development. Um, in terms of twenty twenty-one framework, this is identified as a primary expansion area. And in terms of staff review, there were no issues with this request. Um, moving into the rezoning petition, uh, so the new, uh, should that land be annexed, it would enter the city limits as SFR one. They're petitioning to rezone to LR, and to read this into the record, this is Z oh four twenty-five, Lance Stripling, the Westervelt Company, petitions to rezone approximately nineteen point two three acres located east of New Watermelon Road and south of seven four one five New Watermelon Road from SFR one to LR. This is not in city limits today, uh, per that annexation request. So, you can see here, uh, they're surrounded by LR, and additionally, these pieces here are part of the subdivision request you'll be seeing shortly, so they'd be matching that zoning, um, with the subdivision. Uh, so again, that petition is to rezone from SFR one to LR for that new residential development. Uh, you can see that proposed subdivision here. Uh, this gray area represents that area to be annexed and rezoned.
Stop back up a minute. Define, I was questioning our chair of vice chair meeting, the definition of that line. What, is that county versus city?
That's right, yeah. So, this is the area they're going to be annexing.
So, all of that is currently city? Anything to the?
This is all county.
That's county?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I believe it's the, the reverse. The county is.
Sorry.
So, we're annexing, the cities are down below, the county is on the road, correct?
This is county, and this portion is in city limits.
So, the red is county and the red is the city? I'm joking.
Maybe not a great, uh, choice of color on my part.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, I get it.
But moving into the twenty twenty-one framework plan, uh, this does conform to the plan. The area is identified as suburban residential. Uh, you can see that here, um, and yellow is that suburban residential land use character. Moving into our permitted uses in LR, you can see those highlighted here and in this table. Um, moving on to the subdivision, that is S oh six twenty-five, Hidden Oaks subdivision, consisting of nine residential lots on approximately thirty-six point one acres, located east of New Watermelon, south of seven four one five New Watermelon Road. This is a portion not in city limits, as you saw, and in Council District Three. So, here again is that plat without, excuse me, with contours and without. You can see there's an existing church on Lot Two. Uh, for our variances, we have four requests. Uh, we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Uh, not at this time.
Is Lot Two already in the city limits? Is that why the little gray line juts up between Lot Two and Lot Three?
That's right. So, there's that area to be annexed.
Lot Two is the church. The little church up there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, um, petitioner?
Good evening, commission. Lance Stripling, the Westervelt Company, fourteen hundred Jack Warner Parkway, Tuscaloosa. I'm an engineer and surveyor, uh, that's representing this project. As said, it's nine lots. This is an estate lot subdivision. Lot Two is where the Old Center Church is located, and it was included in this to clean up some boundary line issues that existed with the property line going through the church. So, um, they're in favor of this, and, and we're also going to bring water and sewer to them that they currently do not have. Any questions?
I, I, how, how dare you bring an estate lot subdivision in front of us? We haven't seen this unicorn in a while. I don't think we've seen it in about four years. Right, Zach? Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, well, hang on, Mr. Stripling. Mission, any questions? All right. Anyone here speak, to, to speak for or against this subdivision? Okay. All right. Uh, Zach, I guess we'll take these one at a time, correct? All right. Commission, before us, we have, uh, annexation zero three two five, annexing approximately nineteen point two three acres, located east of New Watermelon Road and south of seven four one five New Watermelon Road. Uh, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay. All approved, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right, commission, before us, we have Z zero four, um, two five, the Westervelt Company petition to rezone approximately nineteen point two three acres from SFR one to Lake resident, Lake Residential LR, not in, currently in city limits. Commission, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Rumsey, starting with you, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, finally, I have, uh, commission, I have S dash zero six dash two five, Hidden Oaks subdivision, consisting of nine residential lots on approximately thirty-six point one acres of lo- of locate, of land located east of New Watermelon Road and south of seven four one five New Watermelon Road.
Mr. Stripling, can, can, can I ask a question before you come? Uh, can you pull the picture back up for the driveways? Is there a shared driveway, is it, are, are any of these lots sharing in a drive? I see the, the two stub out. Okay, I see three of them now, okay. So, so, so there won't be but three entrances on, is that right?
O or X.
Four. Because there'll be. Okay, there'll be.
Do you share these drives a little less clear? Lot One, we have, oh, it's really.
Driveway, and it is depicted there. Then obviously Lot Two is the church, which is really a non-buildable lot.
Oh, I see.
And then Lot Three.
There'll be three additional curb cuts or not curb cuts because there isn't a curb.
Yeah, there's no curb, there's no curb there. But we, you know, according to our subdivision regulations, when we have a street of this, you know, it's a collector, then we minimize the number of, you know, driveway accesses, and they've met that.
You've got, and it says a shared use easement, so we're working through that process.
Yes, that'll be indicated on.
I didn't notice it on the first drawing.
Thank you. All right, go back to your variances. I don't have to do that again, do I? With variance approval per previous statement with various requests, drainage study lot configuration, half-street improvements, and sidewalk construction, of which the staff has no issues, correct? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Uh, starting with Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries. All right.
All right, moving on to our next companion case tonight. This is the Branchwater subdivision, starting with GPD O two twenty-five for Branchwater subdivision. Longleaf Engineering LLC petitions to rezone approximately seventeen point one acres, located east of ten three ninety Technology Drive, fronting Wire Road from SFR1 to GPD. This is as a general plan development, consisting of fifty-five single-family lots and three open space lots, Council District Five. As you all are familiar with framework and our new zoning code adopted, PUDs or general plan developments as we know them now, will be coming to you as a rezoning petition. So that's what we'll start with here. So you can see here, we're off of I twenty and near Technology Drive. Zooming in on that property, just to make a note, the property we're looking at tonight is cut off here. It's that area zoned SFR1 today. You can see that again here. This is vacant land today. The petition is to rezone from SFR1 to GPD for the development of a residential subdivision. This property has come to you before for a PUD under the previous code. So this may look familiar. It's the same request that you all have seen before you. So looking at that master plan here, you can see those fifty-five residential lots and two open space lots. Getting into the PUD narrative here, you can see again fifty-five lots, two open spaces, two off-street parking areas per lot. You're looking at one and two-story homes here between seventeen hundred and three thousand square feet, a mix of three to five bedrooms. In terms of material, you're looking at cement board siding and brick veneers. Here are some example elevations of those potential properties. Moving into the subdivision portion, this is PS O three twenty-five, Branchwater subdivision, consisting of fifty-five residential lots and three open space lots on approximately seventeen point one acres, located east of ten three ninety Technology Drive, fronting Wire Road. This is Council District Five. So here again is that proposed plat with contours, without. Moving into our variance requests, they are requesting lot configuration and half-street improvements. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Zach, the history of this, back way when, we've seen this twice.
That's right, yes, sir.
And this is number three.
This is number three, so.
Give me the, give me the history.
Yeah, so first came to you guys for a rezoning request and a planned unit development at the time, which you guys recommended denial for. It went to city council and was approved for the rezoning. So then they brought it back as a PUD again to you guys, and y'all approved it as a planned unit development, and then it has expired since that timeframe.
So we're bringing it, so we approved it the second time.
That's right, yeah.
And now we're just, they let it expire and we're going back.
Yeah, and nothing has changed from the time that y'all had approved.
Did anything change from the first one, layout, mindset?
Um, I don't remember from the first time.
I think so, I think it changed. I think they.
Yeah.
Last.
Concerned, we can ask.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Good evening, Tom Sims with Longleaf Engineering, nineteen twenty-seven Seventh Street. Um, yes, this was previously approved as a PUD, and the developer just didn't have an opportunity to start construction. We actually have construction plans submitted. The city was approved by staff, was ready to begin construction. They just never pulled the trigger. And the anticipation was coming up this spring. They wanted to start, but in the meantime, the PUD approval expired. So we needed to come back and get a reapproval. And of course, staff has been helping us try to navigate the new regulations, which is the reason that we've requested the different rezoning and that sort of thing since the regulations have changed.
Are you prepared to promise from the owner we won't see this one again?
I'll defer to the developer.
Promise, staff's honor.
They tell me they're ready to go.
All right, all right. Uh, commission, any questions?
Yeah, I can't find the open space. Is it just gonna be where the wet ones are?
It's there in the north side, and there's some on that west cul-de-sac. There's a dog park area and parking space. There you go.
So, Ms. Sims, I think we recall there being a change from first time we saw it to the second, was there?
There were some minor changes. I think the initial discussion was around whether or not the zoning could be modified from industrial to residential. And then once it was modified to residential, I think it opened up.
I think we do not, you don't have connectivity to the adjacent industrial board.
That is correct, yes, sir.
I think that was what we were concerned with, being up, right up against it, between Scottdale and industrial board.
That's right.
All right, any further questions for petition? Thank you. Uh, is anyone here speak, to speak to this or for this or against this petition, please? Please come forward. Okay, having seen none, we'll close public discussion. Uh, any, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I recused on this a year or two ago at, having abundance of caution. I'll recuse again.
Okay, all right, Mr. Rumsey, recuse. All right, um, so commission, um, see, the variances will be on the, Mike, pull up.
You can start with, you can start with a GPD request first.
All right, uh, commission, before us, we have GPD dash zero two dash twenty-five, Branchwater subdivision, rezone approximately seventeen point one acres, located east of ten three ninety Technology Drive, running Wire Road from SFR1 to GPD as general plan development, consisting of fifty-five lots. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Rumsey is recused. Ms. Prince?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries. Um, all right, commission before us, we have PS dash zero three dash two five, Branchwater subdivision, consisting of fifty-five lots and three open space lots on approximately seventeen point one acres, located east of ten three nine zero Technology Drive, running Wire Road, with two variances that staff does not have issues with, correct?
Correct.
Uh, variances being lot configurations and half-street improvements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Recusal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, next up is our companion case for Hargrove Micro Park. This is three parts, first an annexation, a rezoning, and subdivision. Moving into it first, starting with that annexation. I can see here, we are just south of I twenty, near Bowers Park and the neighborhood Walmart. Zooming in on those properties today, you can see there's two structures that exist on those lots. And just to note, that southern portion here, this lot will not be annexing. It's just those two northern lots part of this petition. For this petition, they are annexing to, excuse me, requesting to annex into city limits for a new commercial development for office warehouses. In 2021 Framework Comprehensive Plan, this was identified as a primary expansion area. No issues from staff identified with this annexation request. Moving into our rezoning, this is Z O one twenty-five. I can see it here again, surrounded by GC to the north and other residential to the other cardinal directions here. Once annexed, they would like to rezone from SFR1 to GC for that new office warehouse development that is proposed. Here's that preliminary site plan for what that may look like. Moving into our 2021 framework analysis, this request does not conform to the plan or the intended use. Identified in the plan, this area is shown as suburban residential on the future land use character map, so predominantly single-family area. Here is that shown here, that suburban residential land use type. Here are our permitted uses in GC, highlighted here. Moving to the next slide, and I believe this is the last slide here. Lastly, getting into the subdivision, this is S O two twenty-five. So you can see here, there's two lots today with two existing structures. Those are to be demolished as part of this development, just moving to one single lot here. And here's that plat without contours. And here again is that preliminary site plan for what this area may look like. We do have a variance request. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
All right, I'm gonna have a few. Uh, back up to the aerial, please, the overall area. So, so currently, the only, the two lots across the street are business-related, is that correct?
Let's just pull up the zoning. Oop, I think I went, Mr. Pons will get us there. So they are zoned GC today.
Okay, and the lot that is not, to the, the lot, well, I'll call it to the south on the sheet. I guess it is to the south, that is, that is currently residential? Or is that in the city?
That's not in the city. This is, it looks like a home, like a house. And then I think these are also single-family homes.
And the fronting lot is not in the city, correct?
That's right, or the.
Hence, they want to annex it, okay?
Yeah, this one and this one are not in the city limits.
That was a smart question, okay. Commission, any other questions of staff? Thank you. Petitioner?
Tom Sims, again with Longleaf Engineering. The request, I think, is pretty straightforward, but I would like to point out that it does not conform to the framework. And I think probably the reason for that is because there are two existing homes there, which would, you know, I guess lend itself to suggesting that that would be future residential if it was to annex into the city. But the traffic on Hargrove Road and the proximity of these lots to Hargrove Road, I'm not sure lend themselves to, you know, the best use as being future residential. There's commercial across the street from these lots to the north already, that's multifamily to the west.
What are those two commercials?
Uh, I believe one of them's a car wash, and I'm not sure exactly what the other one is.
Is that Henry Todd, Henry Brick or?
Oh, I think it's Henry.
They're saying a church.
Gotcha. So that was kind of the basis of why we were requesting.
So to the left is, I think it's apartment complex, isn't it?
Yes, sir, I think that's Palisades Apartments.
And then to the right, obviously, is residential.
Right.
All right, any other questions for petition? Uh, all right, we have several people signed up to speak for this one. Uh, the first person to speak is Ms. Carolyn Booth. Ms. Booth, state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Carolyn Booth. I live at thirty-four oh nine, thirty-seven oh nine, Thirty-Fourth Avenue East, which was initially number one Broadview. My house sits right on the corner as you go into the Broadview subdivision. We own Lot Number One and Number Two. My house sits Catty Corner to Hargrove and Broadview, our Thirty-Fourth Avenue.
Is, is that the house with the pool in the back? With the Catty Corner?
It is, uh-huh, the house with the pool.
Okay, gotcha. And you have that lot and another lot?
I have the lot right behind it.
Okay, those are your two lots?
Yes, uh-huh. Not, y'all blocked, mine is really two, two lots.
Okay.
Um, so the property is right across the road from my house. And I want to speak for the, for a lot of the, my neighbors. Like thirty, I have a petition for like thirty residents in that area. And some of them, I'm sure the others would like to oppose it also. Um, several things. Number one, the letter I received, all the residents in our area did not receive that letter. But the letter dated January the sixth, but it was postmarked mail from Birmingham on the thirteenth. And it was received by the property owners on the, late in the afternoon on the sixteenth. So we really did not have adequate time to look at this, but we did our best. I've lived in that home for over fifty-five years, and we've had a nice residential subdivision. The city did change it from Broadview to Thirty-Fourth Avenue East, which has created a lot of problems, especially with mail. But that's not what we're here to talk about, I know. But in reviewing the type businesses that they want to put in there, we oppose this type business. We don't have a problem about them coming into the city, but we oppose that it's gonna be a business rather than a part of a residential area. We noted that on Jan, December thirteenth, the city council unanimously adopted a new zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city, and this had this property as being zoned as SFR1. Now, only a month later, you're talking about rezoning it to have a business there. We're a residential area. We're surrounded on both sides by apartments. The Palisades, what it used to be called, but now it's Water Oaks. Right next to me, I think that is in the county, and it's now a air conditioning place, air conditioning, heating place. But right behind them is another apartments called Crown Point. So we're surrounded already by apartments on both sides. There's a lot of traffic on the Hargrove Road. Sometimes we can't even get out of Hargrove Road because of all the traffic. That road is kind of used as a cut-through road for all the people that want to avoid going down that far and then up Skyline, so traffic is really bad. And the, uh, the red light that's down on the other side of Palisades, that road, doesn't have a turn signal on it. So a lot of times if a car wants to turn, there's so much traffic that traffic lines up all the way to my house. Uh, so there's a lot of traffic there already. We don't really understand putting a warehouse of offices there. We're real confused about exactly what that warehouse is gonna consist of. It says offices, and it says that each office is gonna have their own door, their own entrance, and own garage, but it's unclear in the drawings. Our property has already been devalued because of the apartments on both sides. And now you're talking about rezoning it to a business. We just really object. We don't think that's appropriate in that area. The car wash across the road there, it's, most time when you go by there, it's not being used as car wash. It's being used as a gathering place for people to come and chat and talk, and I don't know what all they do over there. But you seldom see a car getting washed there. It's just kind of a gathering place. It's just kind of a gathering place. So that's already a problem in our area in addition. So, you know, we moved there, my husband and I bought that property when that subdivision first opened, and we've lived there over fifty-five years, probably closer to sixty years. And we love our neighborhood, we don't want to move, we want to live there, but we don't like the fact that we're being allowed, businesses are being allowed to come in there and devalue our property. So I have a petition here of all the signatures.
Ms. Booth, if you could give that to the staff, they will put it into the record, please. This the first time we've seen this petition?
Because we didn't have time.
I guess.
You know, I was walking out of the cove, going from house to house, and most of the people didn't even understand what was going on there. You know, they said a warehouse, you know? That sounds crazy.
I would complain about the mail, but I probably wouldn't get what I got if it got out in public, so I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
All right. Next person to sign up, I think it's Isaiah. Isaiah? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Isaiah Harper. I am a resident of the Broadview community. I live five doors up from Ms. Booth at thirty-seven forty-three Thirty-Fourth Avenue. And I'm here to object to this mainly because I'm not against progress and business, but, you know, it's affronting our, our subdivision there, right there in front of Ms. Booth's door, if you will. One of the things that I want to point out is that Hargrove Road, as she said, is very congested. That area, including the very corner at the end of the subdivision on Hargrove Road, is one of the city's main bus stops. Students catch the bus right there. There's constant traffic there. There's no, I don't see anything in the plan to, to relieve some of the traffic on that road for this plan because it's gonna bring more people there. And along Hargrove Road there with the apartments and the other ones on the other side, buses come through there throughout the morning and throughout the evening, and if you put a business there, it's going to increase the traffic. I heard the petitioner say that, and that is not part of the city's intended planned use, and I don't think it's just because of Hargrove Road. Can you put that map up where you have the colors there, please? I think it's because of what he said at first, it's because when you look around there, you see nothing but family and residential in this particular area. And that's the way we should keep it. It is a community, Ms. Booth said, she's lived there for a long time. I've lived there for fifteen years. We have a very pleasant community, and just to put a business lot in the face of that community, you're asking for trouble and you're, and you're turning a community around. So I'm gonna ask you not to do that. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next person who signed up is Chris Booth.
Yeah, my name is Chris Booth. I'm at, my address is eleven four fifty Booth Ridge, just in Cottondale, Alabama. This is, Ms. Booth is my mother, and so this is my home, home house, and I can tell you exactly how long it's been, fifty-seven years, because I've been there, I'm fifty-seven years old. So this is a neighborhood. I mean, the lot that he's got, he's got the Broadview sign on the lot, on the corner of the lot. So this is a, it's always been Broadview to me. It's the neighborhood, when you go in, there's a residential left, residential right. It's a neighborhood. To put a business at the very start of a neighborhood, it just doesn't make sense. I heard, I heard what I think I said, he said earlier that, that it's, he said there's a lot of traffic on Hargrove Road, which there is. I think he said that wasn't conducive to another resident, which I didn't understand, because if you put a bunch of offices there, it's even gonna make the, you know, everything a lot more busier on that street, which you can't get out now. A lot of questions about what kind of, you know, what there's gonna be in these, in these businesses. I know it's twenty-six offices, and it's supposed, it says construction type, but, you know, looking at the chart that they put up, it could be a lot of things if it's GC. A lot of things that's not conducive to a residential area, which is, which is, it's a residential area. It's been, it's been that way for fifty-seven years, or longer than that, that I've been alive. The building, I'm not sure what the, the building's gonna be made of, I mean, I don't know if it's, what kind of building it is, it really didn't say. It said something about garage doors on each, or garages on each one of them. I don't know if it's some metal building, brick building. It had some buffer walls on there, on the south side, on the west side. Really doesn't say what the buffer is as far as the neighborhood if this was to be built. Not sure of a lot of things, but I guess the overall thing of it is being a commercial building in a res, in a residential neighborhood. It is like mom said, you know, she had very little time, but there was nobody opposing this. The whole neighborhood, everybody that saw it, everybody's against it. I mean, this is a neighborhood, it's residential, it's always been residential. The GC across is a church in a, in a car wash that's hardly used. So it's really, and it does have, it does have a residential that's to the north side of it, too. So it's really, besides the apartments on the, on the, on the west side, it's all residential pretty much around it. So, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else here want to speak in opposition to this case? Please understand, this is the fourth person to speak, so this will be the last person we'll hear in opposition. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Chris Allen. I live at thirty-seven twenty-seven Thirty-Fourth Avenue East, also known as number three Broadview, which is right next to Ms. Booth's vacant lot. I'll be brief. I won't rehash everything that's been said prior. My main concern is not necessarily this particular business going in and what it looks like or what it's made of or any of that. It's what doors would be open by changing from SFR1 to GC and the possible uses in the future that could come in by right. A liquor store, a vape shop, a restaurant. We're talking about totally changing the character of the entire neighborhood. If you look at the neighborhood, right to the south of the proposed change is a lady that's been there since before the neighborhood was built. Under, under that, the D shape is our neighborhood. There's only one way in and one way out. So we're talking about changing the character of the whole neighborhood for everybody coming in and going out. I have a sixteen-year-old who's just starting to drive. I don't want him having to pull out on Hargrove Road with that business traffic that's already really bad. But my main concern is, like I said, the possible future things that could come in there by right under a GC. I think it's more appropriate to leave it zoned for residential. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. All right. We've heard from those who are in opposition. There is anyone in the room that wants to speak in favor of this petition?
I'm Clay Smith, Act First Properties. I'm the owner of the proposed redevelopment. Currently, this is non-police jurisdiction. The, there's businesses to the right side, there's Eaton Co., there's State Services, there's the Crimson Wholesale Carpet Place, you've got the...
Well, let me ask you, you said this is not in the police jurisdiction?
It's currently unzoned.
He means not in the city limits?
Not in the city limits, sorry.
I'm sorry, not, so it's in the PJ?
Yes. It's currently just unzoned.
Currently, it's in the county, is what you're saying.
Yes. So it's technically not SFR1.
Right.
We understand the neighborhood is zoned, and we understand the concerns as to why we were trying to make the entrance off of Hargrove, and with the amount of businesses that are already on Hargrove, it seemed to fit. And as far as the warehouses, we are looking at, I'm sure you've seen them pop up, small building units envisioned having your, your one-man plumber, your two-man HVAC guy, they can't have their cars parked in the neighborhood with their truck. So they'll rent up space, they'll have a small office there, they can do their billing, and be there in the morning and be there in the afternoon, no constant, we're not retail, nothing like that, no in-and-out traffic all day long. It's kind of just a come-together, huddle spot, do your JSA for the day, get out and go, go to your work with some people living in neighborhoods and HOAs becoming greater in need. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Clay Smith, you were the owner. Ms. Sims, petitioner, do you have anything else you'd like to add? Anybody else want to speak in favor of this petition? At this time, I'll close public comment. Commissioners, open discussion internal with you.
Mr. Chairman, it seems like...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So the garage doors, that's for like big trucks to pull into or other equipment?
I'm, I'm...
I'm sorry, I should have asked.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. He was saying like summers and small, I gathered, small.
I believe the limit on them is ten foot for the neighborhood residential?
It used to be. I'll check and see if we carry that.
So maybe a, no trucks bigger than what you can pull with a personal pickup truck?
How many, how many? I'm sorry, Dean, go ahead. Are you finished? How many units? You show, you're showing a, basically a planned view, and I'm assuming that's a concrete layout.
Yes, sir, twenty-six.
So twenty-six units, both front and back?
Yes.
What size? So that, the layout I'm looking at with the lines is your, is that your unit?
Twenty-six foot by forty foot. So that'd be right at a thousand square foot, I think, thousand seventy-two.
So this is, how big is it? This building's twenty-six thousand square feet? Is that, is that one?
Yes, sir, I can't quite see that far.
You can, I certainly can. So twenty-six thousand square feet, how tall is this building? Do you have, do you have an architectural drawing?
Not yet.
Do you have a, a, a sense of the aesthetics of this building?
Yes, sir, there's a, we'll have a brick veneer, we'll have a man door, garage door, or overhead door, a glass window for the office space, and it's gonna be metal building. We'd like to do a more attractive metal siding than just your standard warehouse, kind of some board and bat and all panels.
So you say you're gonna have, I'm assuming this is a pre-engineered metal build, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming this is a pre-engineered metal build?
Yes.
So it's not, it's not, it's not a conventional build?
No, sir.
Okay. So you, you just said brick veneer, that I heard, but then you went on and say party board or vinyl or metal siding or what? I didn't hear.
There'll be up to thirty percent brick, and I think we have to have up to so much of a...
Yeah, we got material standards in this district.
So you're, you're aware of our new codes? And those codes effectively control the building itself or the, or, or does it control the, the streets that it runs?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, I mean, you've got, you've got, you've got public, you've got two public, three public streets on either side, or two public streets on two sides.
Yes.
So you're going by the percentage is not the frontage of the street, correct?
Correct.
Is this facility air-conditioned, heated?
No, sir, they'll be air-conditioned in the little ten-by-ten offices in each unit, but the general space will not be.
And what, what are you proposing as a buffer between these residential areas?
Brick wall.
Brick walls?
The, the wall that's shown on the plot right there.
The wa, I don't see a wall.
On the bottom, the proposed, so right there, and then on the Palisades side as well.
So brick walls. How tall are these walls?
Six foot. And then the proposed buffer zone that meets current, current regulations.
Are you looking at asphalt or concrete? I mean, if I, if I had a drawing of it, I could tell you what I was looking at.
Asphalt parking lot.
Can't read what you got.
Sidewalk, concrete.
Asphalt with concrete?
Yes.
And flat roof, I assume?
No, ma'am, it'll actually have a pitched roof. It'll be probably a twelve-foot eve height in the top, on the front and back side, and then the middle part of it to somewhere sixteen to eighteen foot tall.
Are, are you using a colored roof or architectural roof or gasoline roof?
Color roof.
Or?
Color roof.
Lighting?
Around the parking lot? Probably just have lighting around the building to kind of use the building to hang lights to shine out.
Wall back?
Yes.
So each one of these units, the twenty-six, is that right?
Yes.
Each one will have a garage door?
Yes.
And you said, what's the time that different tenants are gonna be occupying these, correct?
The tenants come in.
Different tenants are gonna be occupied each one of these, correct?
Yes.
So you, hours of operation?
I guess it will vary depending on who, who puts tenant is.
So you could have somebody there after, after hours, right?
I suppose. I'm sure it wouldn't be any later than, like I've been sitting in Eaton Co. in the unusual map.
Out of curiosity. I'm sorry, you said thirty percent brick is, that's a, that's a big building. Thirty percent brick is not gonna get, get you very far.
Well, so, so not less than seventy-five percent of the building wall surface area on each facade, brick or tile masonry, stone, wood clambered or shingles, cementitious siding or stucco.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm looking at plus, plus seventy parks here, is that right? How many parks you got?
More than the, they called for. I know we ended up having some more space, and we decided to get some more.
So Mike?
Will not be storage parking.
Mike, with, with seventy, seventy vehicles, seventy-plus vehicles, potential vehicles on this lot, I mean, we, we don't require a traffic study for this?
So based on the, the concept that this gentleman presented to you is, you know, you're gonna have a, a plumbing company or an HVAC company that has two to three employees. I was fixing to ask what the purpose of all the parking spaces were, and I don't know if the zoning allows for any vehicles to be stored outside overnight, but I was curious about that as well.
You, I'm sorry, I must have missed that. You say you're, you require that no vehicles will be stored overnight?
No, sir, not the, the zoning they were going for, it was requirement that there's no like construction equipment parking.
No vehicles? There's a difference in construction equipment and vehicle?
Right.
Is that no vehicles?
Our thought was to give the, to give plenty of parking spaces so you don't have people parking in front of their door and block, making it harder for everybody else to go around.
I, I, I understand, but I mean, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, did you say no vehicles overnight or no construction vehicles overnight?
No construction vehicles overnight.
So somebody can park a truck, pack?
Can't park a piece of equipment overnight.
You know, we could, we could require a turn analysis. If this thing passes and we get to the construction plan approval phase, with this number of parking spaces, it would probably be advantageous for them to provide us some kind of turn lane warrant analysis if we're gonna have that many vehicles daily wanting to turn into this development.
I guess here's, here's part of my, my issue that I've got. I mean, you're asking us to give it. Hey, I grant it, I get it, it's in the county, but chicken houses. Do, right now, you can put a used car lot out there, you can do anything that you want to, and ain't nothing we can tell you not to do.
Right.
And so from our standpoint, hey, I want it annexed in the city. I, I do, I, I want this, but you're asking me to, you're asking us, this commission, to make a judgment, put this thing right adjacent... put this thing right adjacent to, um, a bunch of residents with a plan that I don't know what this thing looks like. Okay, I've got a few dots on the line that tells me this is gonna be a brick fence. We got parking spaces here, we may let some trucks park here, we may not. We got a brick house, oh, we got thirty percent brick. We got something on the siding that fits your new code. I don't know what this thing looks like and, I, I mean, you can build it with a round roof for all I know. I, I got a problem with this commission being a litmus test to see if a project could pass. And a project of this magnitude not coming up here with some decent drawings for me to look at to see what you're gonna build next to the neighborhood.
I can't tell what's going on.
That's exactly where I'm at. Any other questions for the developer? All right, closed public comment. Commission? Any discussion?
To me, it's very similar to the first case. You know, the first case, they were just asking for a subdivision, which this is going to the next step where we told the previous people that at the next step, we would have some jurisdiction. You know, this is the next step, okay? So they're asking for a building. It's materially, you know, the one way in and one way out of the subdivision, it, to me, to me, it just seemed like a travesty. Now, I understand from what you're saying, Mr. Chairman. I guess they could go take twenty-five cars and just park them on the lot. I mean, I guess that, you know, if you, if they don't get what they like, they could do something like that. But I wouldn't, I don't feel comfortable playing a role. In my mind, there's probably fifty places you could do this in the, around the county of Tuscaloosa without impacting, such a, such a, such a neighborhood, such as Broadview with one entrance in and one, one entrance out. Do you think it's a little bit different than the, than the one that we saw previously? And there was, there was several access roads on that one. But we will probably see the same situation come up on that. I don't, I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with, with impacting the lives of, of, of all these people that, you know, that you've got an apartment building that's, that's residential on one side. I do understand that you've got the two businesses. I may be as pro-business person as sitting on this board, but I don't know that if, if given the vote, I would have voted for the car wash across the street. I don't know if we were ever given that opportunity. It may have just popped up. As far as the towel company, you know, I can imagine a couple of people coming in a day and maybe, maybe as many as ten and looking at towel. But this is a lot of vehicles, seventy cars coming and going. And a metal building is gonna materially change the personality of this area. And if I have the legal right to vote no, I think I will. Do I, do I? Okay. Okay, well, that, look, I mean, that, that's, that's how I feel. That's how I feel based on what I'm seeing.
Any other comments?
Mike, Mr. Garner. Even if this stays in the county and he wanted to put a car lot or whatever on it that we couldn't control, would he have to go through the city to get a right of way off of Hargrove Road into his property? Would, what would engineering have to say about entrance and exits and things like that?
So he would have to get a land development permit through our office to construct it. Even outside the city limits, but in our planning, police jurisdiction, you.
So you would have a little control over?
Yes, sir, we would.
You know, my, my big problem is just like what we talked about earlier about the lot over at Forest Lake. I know this isn't spot zoning, but it's kind of taken away from the neighborhood because we're going into the neighborhood, putting a business there. And this is the entrance of the neighborhood. It's not like the backside or two lots over, it's at the entrance. I know the neighborhood real good. I go by up and down, over the road all the time. And it, and, and it, traffic is a problem, but traffic's a problem everywhere in Tuscaloosa. I'm sorry.
But one of these lot. One of these lots has, has potential entrance off the side street. So there's really only one that must.
You're still coming in off a city street that you'd have to go through Mr. Garner, I guess. City engineers.
I'm just pointing out that really, one of the lots can, could be residential and still enter on the side street.
But, but here, here's something to think about. Mike, uh, if, if it, that scenario, if it stays in the county, he goes to Mike for a land development permit and he's granted the access off of Hargrove. At that point, we have no control of what it can look like at all if it stays in the county, correct? I mean, it could be, it can be no brick, it can be straw, it can be hay, I'm just being facetious, but, uh.
Well, the, 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 hence the reality of a development like this, it's gonna need sewer and oil. It may water and sewer, I mean, you can get water, but not be able to.
But I'm, I'm talking about the look.
Right, I understand.
We have no control of the look at that point, meaning that.
But it would be difficult for them to build this without water.
Well, I'm talking about aesthetic.
I understand, yeah, aesthetic, right.
You gotta have that.
You're right.
You gotta have that regardless. I'm talking about the aesthetic now. The thirty percent brick, all that stuff's out the windows at, out the window at that point. So that's just something to think about. That's all I'm, that's, I'll just bring that to think about.
So let me.
Well, it's, it's clearly not a framework. It's not what we foresaw for this area or wanted to encourage. I understand the problem with the annexation issues, but, um, you know, we've got neighborhood opposition, we've got, and there might be a business that would go there. I mean, I don't know, doctor's offices or something, I mean, it could be something that would be acceptable to the neighborhood. But there, there's too many, there's too many questions about the design, there's too many questions about the location and, um.
We'll surely be sticking a knife in, in the life of the subdivision long term.
I, I'm in favor of the annexation, but to protect the integrity of the neighborhood, um, I would like for it to be annexed into the city so that we could have some regulations over it. But the, the, uh, project itself and the design of the property is too vague. And, and more details would have been appreciated to at least calm the fears of the residents that spoke tonight and to be able to answer some of their concerns. We, I don't have any, any answers to what this is exactly gonna look like. I mean, same, same sentiments from everyone else on the board. You should have came with more details about what this actual building would have looked like so that we could have had a proper discussion about it. But I do feel the best way to protect the integrity of any neighborhood is to have it annexed into the city. And then at that time, it'd be what, District Six?
So.
Something like that, okay, yeah, Six, okay.
Let me, let me, Zach, procedurally, um, obviously we want all the property annexed in the city we can get. So assuming we annex this, um, the zoning would go, would go to the, um, zoning recommendation would go to the city council for as a recommendation. But the subdivision, final subdivision would go, would be our, with us.
That's right, yeah, so.
So if we do not, if we don't, how do we vote, which, how do we vote for this in order?
So you would be able to, to outright approve the subdivision if you're okay with them removing that lot line? And if they wanted to move forward with that, they could just remove that lot line? Would the annexation and the rezoning, uh, uh, they might be willing to continue and work on these, you know, these things that they've heard? Or if you guys vote, y'all could vote for a recommendation to approve or deny?
I, I'm, I, I'm, they're, they're obviously more than welcome to continue. I know we spent a lot of time on this case. And in my opinion, if they continue, there's a lot gotta change on this. In, including trying to put a elephant on top of the basketball field in close to residential district. So that's, Tiskin, step up.
I, I gotta say this too, just, I mean, it made that matter, but, um, I don't, I'm not really concerned with how anything would look. I'm concerned with upholding the framework.
Agreed.
And not doing a spot zone. Review me, the, the tile and the car wash, are they out of the city limits?
No, they're in the city limits.
In the city limits and in zone.
GC.
GC. What, and they were zone neighborhood business before we changed our coding?
More than likely, that's why they're going to GC.
You know, I, it, it wouldn't matter to me at all, I, okay, what they come back with, I just would not be in favor of rezoning that property, uh, to allow any of those GC uses. Is that what it is?
That's right.
Okay, GC uses. Just for, just for the record, I just don't want them to go to a lot of trouble and come back in next month and, and the maj, majority of us send a recommendation of denial to the city council.
In transparency.
And also, the church and the car wash across Hargrove Road back up to the interstate. If that makes a difference. All the, all the lots are across the road back up to the interstate.
Chair, I just wanna say, in transparency, uh, like Ms. Prince was saying, uh, unless something drastic changes with the plans that we saw tonight, this is just too, um, this is too invasive for this neighborhood. Seventy parking spaces and we don't have a lot of details. It would have to be more, more changes for me to still, still for me to approve it. Um, as, as a business at the entrance of a neighborhood, that really changes the integrity and the character of that neighborhood. So, I mean, you know, you gotta do what is work to you.
Ms. Sims, I, I think you understand the mood of this commission and, you know, you can call for a vote now. And, and we can vote on it and, and I think you know where we're gonna head.
Sure.
If you withdraw this and, and you bring it back, I don't think the sentiments are gonna change about it, to be honest.
Understood. I, I think what we would prefer to do, if it pleases you guys, is to continue it and then we'll have a deeper discussion immediately.
Well, if you continue it, I, I, I don't, I don't wanna spend another thirty or forty minutes talking, fighting over this. Because if you don't come back with something that's.
You won't see the same thing.
A pretty picture on a building like this in this neighborhood, we wasting our time.
Understood.
Okay. So commission, before us, I have a request for continuance. I'm assuming AN O two dash two five, can I take them all three together, Zach? For continuance. Uh, AN O two dash two five, Z dash zero one dash two five, S dash zero two dash two five. Now, commission, you can decide if we hear this or not tonight. Or you can decide if we do not hear based on where we're at. So, um, I ask for a, a voice vote to continue approval?
Now, are we gonna require or at least request that the petitioner meet with the neighborhood and try to, try to get them on board with the building, like and with the entrance and the landscaping or something that affect or is it, or is that matter?
I think we can, can we strongly, can we strongly suggest or can we make that a requirement? Okay, we can make a requirement, Mr. Rumsey.
I mean, I just.
I agree with you.
Because, because to me, there might, it might be a long shot. It might be that he could landscape it or build it with, in such a way that he makes the neighborhood feel safer, but right now, I just wouldn't.
That's, that, that could be an option, that's true. And the land, the neighborhood, you do need to understand that it is in the county. And they can do a lot with it right now that would be worse than what he's trying to do. So there's always that consideration. So yes, I would say that's a good suggestion, Mr. Rumsey.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna have a individual voice, I mean, a call vote, right, instead of a voice vote?
Uh, based on that request, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
How about that? All right, so I'm, I've lost, I'm lost. All right, so with AN zero two dash two five, with Z zero one dash two five, with S zero two dash two five, I request a motion for continuance?
Motion.
I have a, a, a motion in a second. Mr. Rumsey, beginning with you.
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
No.
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 Yes.
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 No.
What's the number?
It's five o's.
It's, uh, four, uh, four o's?
Order four.
Four, four.
Motion does not care. All right, uh, commission, before us, we have, um, I'm on. AN zero two dash two five, Z zero one dash two five, S dash zero two dash two five. Um, I would put out a motion to not allow this to continue. May I have a motion?
Motion.
He said not.
No, no, I saw you just, it just goes to the council with, with a no regard.
No, no, but he, that vote was asking if we wanted to allow a continuance. Since it was tied four, four, what I understood Mr. Woodson to say is that that didn't pass. So that means that now we can take up each of these.
Okay.
Things on an individual basis, starting with whatever one you wanna start with. We usually always start with the annexation, but we can do, you know, whatever y'all wanted it. Am I wrong? I mean, I may be wrong.
That's right.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
All I know, when I see Bill Wright, I'm gonna kick him in the.
He picked a great meeting to mess, didn't he?
All right. Somebody help. All right, uh, commission, uh, before us, we have AN zero two dash two five and the annexation. I will take, in, in lieu of taking a yes or no, we're gonna do this one on a voice vote uh, based on the contentious of where we're at. I'll take a motion to approve the annexation moving forward.
Motion, second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Annexation carries. Commission, before us, I have Z, Z dash zero one dash two five, Longleaf Engineering LLC petitions rezoning approximately two point three eight, two point three acres located three, three, one and three, three, two, seven, Hargrove Road East from SFR one to GC. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Who does, where do I start with then? Do I start with you or the? Ms. Hornsby?
No.
No.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hornsby, you were a no?
I'm a no.
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 No. Motion is denied. Do we need to go further on the subdivision based on that? All right, commission, before us, I have S zero two dash two five, Hargrove Micro Park, a resurvey of lot one of Bobby Hagler subdivision consisting of one lot and approximately two point three acres located three, three, one, one and three, three, two, seven, Hargrove Road East, not in the city limits. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Question. If, if the first two, first two have to go to the council?
The first two, the rezoning and the annexation go to council's recommendations.
They do not pass the council, but we pass this.
It's fine, they're just removing the lot line, so the lot will just get larger but remain in the county.
The third one, if we voted in, it passes regardless what the council.
That's right, and then they would be able to pursue a final plat with removing that lot line.
All right, uh, so I've got a motion in a second and the motion is to approve. Uh, Mr. Rumsey?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes.
Yes. No.
No. All right. All right, staff, next item.
I don't wear it. Laughing, have this right.
All right, moving on to our next companion case, it's the Avenue subdivision. Uh, this is two parts here, excuse me. That's okay, we can take a pause, the clicker also ran out of battery.
We gotta, somebody retrieving us a battery.
He didn't get it.
There you go. All right, go ahead.
All right, uh, starting with the next companion case, it's the Avenue subdivision. Three parts here, we have Z O two twenty-five, this is a rezoning from SFR one to SFR two. This is followed by GPD O three twenty-five, this is rezoning from SFR two to GPD. And then finally, a subdivision that we'll look at here. Uh, moving on to the city map, you can see we're just east of Home Depot and Target. Uh, zooming in on the property today, you can see it's S F R one, surrounded by other residential zonings. And you can see that property today does have a structure, uh, but most of that land is vacant. So, the petition, uh, this is the first part here is rezoning from S F R one to S F R two. This is going to be for a new pocket neighborhood that you'll see with that G P D rezoning request. So, here is that preliminary site plan. You can see it has cottage courts to that, um, west, uh, portion. You can see where sideways north is to the right here. So, cottage courts on top in the west direction, townhomes on the south. That we'll look at more.
Can we stop right there?
Yeah.
Okay, so for, for everybody's sake here, this, this is a new, what's called a pocket subdivision.
Correct.
I, I, it's a different concept that we've seen in the past in Tuscaloosa, but please make sure you're aware of the layout. You have your, your streets, your parking, and then your walks to smaller, what do we call them? Single-family homes. Um, you have street parking, sidewalk, walk to your single-family home, street parking. Uh, I guess the other ones on the other side are more townhome related, is that correct?
Yes, there's townhomes on that bottom portion, uh, to the east.
Want to make sure everybody is aware of that.
All right, moving on. So, in terms of that S F R two rezoning, that does conform to framework. This area is identified as traditional neighborhood edge. And here you can see that map, uh, surrounded by traditional neighborhood edge. Getting into our permitted uses for S F R two, you can see those here and on the next slide. Uh, next, from that rezoning to S F R two, they're petitioning to rezone to G P D. Uh, this is for a general plan development consisting of one two point six three acre lot with twenty proposed cottage-style homes, ten townhomes and two open space lots. So, you can see again here that property, um, moving in the petition again, rezoning from S F R two to G P D for that unique pocket neighborhood. Here again is that site plan with those cottage courts on the top, townhomes on the bottom, as well as those open spaces. Getting into that general, uh, plan development narrative, you can see thirty residential units total, twenty cottage-style homes and with ten townhomes. Um, in terms of common spaces, we have courtyards, dog park and green space. For parking, the townhomes will have private off-street parking and for those cottages, they'll have shared parking. Uh, for kind of the two different styles for the townhomes, they range from two-bed, two-bath to three-bed, two-and-a-half bath, eight hundred to a thousand square feet. For those cottage-style homes, you're looking at a range from one-bed, one-bath to three-bed, two-bath between six hundred and a thousand square feet. Uh, for materials, the exterior finishes will be brick, hardy and vinyl. Here are some example layouts and elevations of the proposed cottages, some additional examples here and a few more. And then moving into the proposed townhomes and another, um, example of those townhomes. Lastly, is the subdivision portion of this, so that is S O four twenty-five. Uh, here again is that site plan, so you can see one, uh, lot for those cottage court-style, uh, single-family dwellings and then to the south, those townhomes and two open space lots. And here's that flat without contours and moving into our variance requests. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
So, back up to the, the, your, the, all of the cottage homes are one lot and then each of the townhome is its own lot.
Correct.
It's a total of eleven lots.
Correct.
I got it. Thank you.
So, let me clarify, the, the sidewalk construction waiver only applies to the segment along Seventeenth. Their proposed roadway through the development will have a continuous sidewalk in it.
And is he showing that?
He is. It's a little, little hard at this scale, but he is.
So, where is he showing that? I mean, all I'm seeing is valley guys.
So, if you look on the west side along the townhome units.
I got, yeah.
And then there's sidewalk connectivity in the cottage court areas as well. Now, some of that's in the public right of way and some of that is not.
All right.
What's the solid waste plan? What's the solid waste plan?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
What's the solid waste plan?
Um, I believe I, I'll leave that to the petitioner to answer that question.
All right, any further questions, staff? Petitioner? Hey, Ms. Sims, before you start.
Yes, sir.
When we redid, this is, this is a pretty neat little concept, actually. When we redid this, our zoning, did we consider this type of development? Is there, I mean, we're, we're, I know we're, we're putting it in a, in a basically plan unit development, which I don't know what we call it. I'm, we're still working on the nomenclature. But, I mean, is this, we envision this in our?
Yeah, so the idea.
I mean, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a little concept. All right.
Sorry about that.
Well, i- it is a unique type of development and, uh, we, we've kind of got staff to hold our hand a little bit on trying to figure out a way to, to move it through the process as far as the zoning request and that sort of thing. But, um, uh, w- we do, we do, uh, expect these to be single-family, uh, rental units within the single lot. That's why they're all on one lot there. Uh, they each have their own. Each cluster of five has an individual sidewalk network that, that connects them back to the parking areas and that sort of thing. Uh, we also have, uh, designated spaces for cart, uh, garbage pickup is, is what you, you'd ask.
What about the townhomes?
Uh, townhomes, same, same for them, in, individual, uh, individual service carts for each of the, um, townhomes. And, and we have some designated spots where those, those things would be, so they, they weren't. We wanted to make sure they just weren't, you know, strewn all over the place, so, uh, we did, we did take that into account. But otherwise, uh, like I said, it's a infill zone that, that's been vacant for quite some time, so it, it seems to fit framework as well.
I'm, I, I think what I'm looking at is the proposed tension bond with the dog park.
Yes, sir, they're on the northwest corner. That's, that's correct, yes, sir.
Any questions of the petitioner?
Just to, you know, make sure I'm, y'all are straight. Okay, so the people who buy the.
Ain't seen a speak in your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. The people who buy the cottages, they're going to enter and they're going to park all in those little parking spaces that are to the west of the road, correct? And then they walk out on the little sidewalks to their individual house.
Dana, let me, let me correct you. These are, I think these are going to be rental units and they're not going to be bought because it's all one lot.
Correct.
Okay, I, yeah, okay, good. I wondered how that was going to work, but.
So, so you have. You've got, you've got two, two cars, two parking spaces per unit, is that right? And it, okay, and it does get there? And, you know, we had the same, kind of the same question, if you remember on, um, Brixton, before it was Brixton. Is there any place that, so, other than the two parks for?
No game day.
Have we done a bedroom count?
I think what he's alluding to is additional parking for guests.
Yeah, is there?
Yeah. Y- yes, we, we do have a, a few surplus lots there, yes, sir.
You have it three or?
I don't remember the exact count. He was back.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but we can get a clearer picture and, and look at it.
For some of these one-bedroom?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Is all of these relevant?
The ones on the west side, yes, sir. The cottage homes are. Yes, sir, it's, uh, I, we, we fit a lot into this drawing, but, but there are some designated spots for those carts there.
Where, where did you say the carts go?
I'm sorry.
Where are the carts? Garbage carts?
The, the carts will actually be stored at each of the individual units, but we have designated pickup places along the, the roadway. Really, I think between those, uh, parking spaces that you see where you have some landscape islands out in front of those, there's some concrete islands that we were designating for, for that purpose.
Yeah, but how can a garbage truck pick up free with the arm thing that comes up? They don't have the, the drive.
Where's the dumpster?
Yeah, I, I don't, you, you saying a, a separate garbage cart for each unit?
Yes, sir.
I don't see how that's going to possibly work.
They're going to have carts, right? City cart, yeah. Uh, the city will have to service this. But, um, as far as the architecture, I saw your pictures and I saw, you know, some kind of cool-looking stuff, but is that what's going to be built or that's just a sample of things that possibly be built or? How do we know what will be built or do we have any say-so over that after?
I can, I can defer to the owner who provided those renderings, but, uh, I, it's m- my understanding that those are going to be very similar builds to what you see.
So, as part of the G P D rezoning, they're going to be held to what they've submitted to you guys in terms of the layout a- as well as the material and design.
We'll have a, we'll have, we'll get to see the architecture render?
Yeah, so they're, what you see is what we're going to be h- holding them to if they come in for permits and things like that.
Mike, will it still go for L D P for the, our garbage side of it as well? Will they still have to have a L D P?
Yes, sir, they, they will.
All right, any more questions with the petitioner? Oh, good. Anyone here, we had, uh, I think Mr. Billy Pearson had signed up, but I think we got a little confusing. That's for another, another one, isn't it? Okay, gotcha. Just remind me when we get. Uh, all right, anybody else here to speak for or against this petition? Having heard none, I'll close this for discussion. Any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Uh, I'm, I'm just remembering that we had a consultant, um, who came and spoke to us down at the River Market and up into the public to talk about the fact that our zoning didn't allow some, these kinds of developments and encouraged that we consider them and look at them. I'm, I'm really, uh, I'm supportive of this and I'm curious about how it's going to turn out, so.
Who is the developer? Do y'all know who's the developer? You're the developer?
Yes.
Good to see you again.
We just rejected on the last. We love you again.
Uh, so.
Mr. Evans, name and address of the record, please.
Uh, Clay Smith, it's one one two seven one Dooley Circle, North Port, Alabama.
Mr. Smith, do you, do you have experience with a project of this nature?
So, the last, I own about fifty single-family home rentals. I've got a few commercial properties. Um, I've done probably twenty-five flips the past two years. Um, I still, this will be the largest one I've ever done. I'm not going to try to sugarcoat that. I'm looking.
Well, as, as Ms. Hornsby said, I think this is, um, when I saw this, I, I, I immediately, it immediately stoked my interest. I, I, I first was skeptical and am still a little skeptical.
Yes.
But I do think there's a need for a product like this in Tuscaloosa. And you have the opportunity to set the standard. I mean, you have the opportunity here to, um, set the standard come for many other developers. If this is done right, like I hope it is, and it works, I mean, I think there's possibly a need for this type of building in other, in other geographical areas in Tuscaloosa, so I commend you for stepping out.
There's definitely a need for a smaller bedroom count. The last several years, the only new developments have been your cookie cutter, three bedrooms. There's, uh, I see kind of envision grad students, first year, you know, their first homes, this is not going to be where they raise their family, but this is going to be that stock gap, that starter, hey, I'm going to live here, I want to live close to town, I want to be able to run to the store and be back in three minutes.
Well, I don't want to be the one to put undue pressure on you, but I am. You have, um, the, 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 the final product of this will be how this commission views future projects of this type to go forward, so I, I commend you for this. I'll do a great job and hope it works well, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other, any other discussion with the developer? All right, uh, any other internal discussion? Thank you, thank you. All right, Commission, before us, we have, um, where am I? Z zero two dash two five, Longleaf Engineering petitions rezon four point eight acres, seventeen hundred twenty-third Avenue East from S F R one to S F R two. Do I have a motion? Yeah, you want to answer?
Motion. Second.
Um, Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, Commission, before us, we have G P D dash zero three dash two five, the Avenue subdivision, a Longleaf Engineering petitions rezon four point eight acres located at seventeen hundred twenty-third Avenue East from S F R two to G P D as a general plan development consisting of two point six three acre lot with twenty proposed cottage-style homes, ten townhome lots and two open space lots. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Let me ask a question before you start real quick.
Okay.
And I'm always late with my questions, but, all right, I, I continue to be concerned about the garbage and how it's going to be picked up, but I guess that's for them to worry about and their tenants to worry about.
Well, I think, Dana, the, 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 the next step will be for it to go to an L D P at which time it will be run before Mike and sanitation for them to approve.
And then, you know, additional parking, again, that'll be, if people move in there and they can't ever have a neighbor because there's no place to park, then that'll get around and nobody will want to rent them, I guess. I mean, that's on the owner to figure out a way, okay.
They'll be parked and drive down those sidewalks.
They are going to have additional parking for guests. So, they're providing sixty-eight parking spaces. They're required sixty-two, which also includes an extra bit of parking for townhomes based off.
And I guess some of the ones that just have one bedroom will just have one car.
But, I mean, it could still be a concern, but they are providing extra.
Okay, all right.
I think where I left off, I think I had a motion in a second.
Yes, you did.
All right, Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, Commission, before us, we have P, P S zero four dash two five, the Avenue subdivision consisting of eleven residential lots, two open space lots and approximately four point eight acres located at seventeen hundred twenty-third Avenue East, Council District Six. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
All right, Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, next up is Cedar Forest. This is a companion case. It is first a rezoning petition to G P D, O four twenty-five, followed by planned subdivision, uh, P S O seven twenty-five. So, moving into the proposal here, uh, you can see we're right next to Bowers Park. Zooming in on that property today, you can see it's S F R one, surrounded by open space to the east uh, and then residential as well as institutional in the blue. Uh, here are those properties today, a few structures mostly vacant. So, first part of this petition is to rezone from S F R one to G P D for the development of a residential subdivision. Uh, this is to the north side of Thirty-first Street East. You can see single-family residential product here, um, eighty lots here. Uh, moving in, just zooming you in here, you can see kind of the layout of those different lots. Um, in the middle, you can see a red box around that, uh, street stub to the north into Cedar Knoll that will not be connected to, and you'll see a variance for that when we get to the subdivision, uh, portion. So, zooming in, showing you the various lots here. Uh, moving to south of Thirty-first Street East, there are eighteen townhomes proposed as well as ten acres of open space. Uh, zooming in on those lots here, you can see there's parking at the rear of those. Uh, getting into the planned unit development narrative here, you can see that total site acreage is twenty-seven point one acres, ten of which will be that open space lot. Uh, this is a single family development comprised of two-story townhomes of eleven hundred square feet minimum, as well as one-story single family homes with a minimum square footage of thirteen hundred square feet. Uh, the townhomes will have no garages, but they will have parking at the rear of the buildings as you saw. Uh, the single family detached homes will have two-car garages as well as additional space in the driveway. Here are some elevations here for the townhomes on the top and that single family product on the bottom, and a few, uh, variations of that single family. Moving into the subdivision here, again, ninety-eight residential lots total and one open space lot. So here again, with contours, that portion north of thirty-first Street and south and without contours for both. Uh, but here's that variance request for that connection to the stub street I mentioned earlier. We received three public comments with concern regarding this proposal. Do you have any questions for staff?
Right, take us back one drawing, let me try to, one more, yeah, well, do we have an overall with both of those or is that?
We don't have an overall, just for the scale.
So Mike, the, the right, bottom right-hand corner, that funky thing that's got a curve doing something there, is that? What, what, what is that?
So, the public right-of-way for thirty-first extends east to the common property line with this development and the park. The road is not built entirely to the end of the right-of-way and their proposal there in improving the roadway in this development, they're stopping short of that right-of-way extension, for lack of a better word to say it.
Are they doing, I mean, that, that, are they doing that because of that floodway frame I'm seeing there? I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why that comes out.
You could reconfigure that to be a curve, really, instead of a, like a three-way intersection because it, I just don't think there's any potential that that road would ever go anywhere with the city owning that property.
You, you walk over there?
I think it's six of one, half dozen the other.
Ugly.
I would say, I guess, in thinking about it a little more, it may, may promote a place for people to park a vehicle, which we would wanna prohibit on public right-of-way.
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I, I totally agree.
All right. Any other questions, staff? All right, presenter?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Michael McGuire with McGuire and Associates, Division of GSA, twenty-six fifteen, uh, Gary Fitz Street. What we have proposed is a ninety-eight lot development, eighty or single family homes. Uh, as staff mentioned, they're gonna be in a price range of two eighty-five to three twenty-five. Townhomes are gonna be in the range of around two hundred. All underground utilities, um, city services are already there in place, we're gonna extend them and improve them. Thirty-first Street would be improved. We are planning on the, basically the southern portion below thirty-first Street, less of the townhomes. Uh, there's an existing lake, we're gonna basically re- redo the lake and make it nice again. Uh, it's gonna serve as its detention pond, but it's also gonna hold water, um.
Where, where is the li- lake at?
Um, if you see where it says existing lake, right there by the north area? Yeah, it's right there.
So you, I, I assume you're including all of that property in this development to get your density?
Yes, and we, we do not plan to develop it, we're basically just gonna leave it as a nature preserve, um.
How many acres, how, how many acres, the, 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 am I looking? Is that, I guess, lot fifteen, part of lot fourteen, lot fifteen and lot sixteen, is that part of this parcel?
That, that was all part of the, I think Princeton Place or Princeton.
Part of the overall.
Overall, whole neighborhood from.
Because, I mean, obviously because of the low floodway area, it's not buildable, but I guess.
Well, there's a large portion over there just to the west of the lake that it is.
Where is that?
Where it says the southeast quarter, the northwest quarter, where the open spaced nature preserve is labeled, just below the lot fifteen number.
But, so that area is buildable?
Yes. It's outside the floodway, it's actually a nice area, um, we're just gonna leave it natural. Be tough to get to it if you wanted to develop it, but it could be developed.
I, I guess, there's a lot of density north of that.
Well, and, and I certainly realize that, um, we have, I don't know, just kind of explained a few things. The interior lots within the loop of this road, uh, most of those are, of course, they're all single family detached homes, but they are a little bit on the smaller side. The lots in the perimeter, um, they're all, we've made them bigger intentionally uh, to leave a perimeter against Princeton Place as well as Cedar Knoll. The lots on the perimeter also have a thirty-five foot setback to leave a buffer there as well, um.
What, the, the reason for not connecting the stub street, obviously?
The owner, the current owner has met with the owners of lot thirty and thirty-two, and I don't really think they wanted it. Um, I don't know that it's gonna help, we did a traffic study, there was really no need to connect it. So that's, we just did not connect them.
And I, I, I'm assuming also, it looks like you're stacking parking in, you got parking in a carport and then two car parks in the.
Yeah, there's four, basically four off-street per single family home.
And, and regarding the stub street, you have submitted a request of ver-
Yeah, for the right-of-way vacation.
To vacate that right-of-way.
And the stub street down at the southeast corner, if, I mean, we could either do away with it and make a curve. We kind of were gonna tie, there's a, a walking trail in Bowers Park right there, we're, we're gonna extend from the sidewalk a walking trail over towards the park.
I guess I did, I, I, I did see that originally and I didn't remember, you do border Bowers Park to the west, east?
East. Um, the lake will have a walking trail around it as well. And it's gonna be, it would be a nice development, um, there's, you know, the homes are gonna be nice, the walking trail, the lake. Right now, it's kind of an, especially the lake area is kind of an eyesore.
All right, any other questions for petition?
Yes, are there homes on nineteen twenty twenty? You don't have a roof drawn yet, that's why I'm curious.
On nineteen twenty?
The bottom.
Are there hu- there will be homes on there, yes.
Okay.
We just, we didn't show homes on every lot, we just kinda tried to mix it, so you, you just,
I understand.
Would've made it too cluttered, really.
Pretty dense.
Really dense.
All right, any, any other questions for petition?
Steven, Ms. Prince, no good?
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a couple of people signed up to speak, uh, I assume in opposition. Uh, number one is Mr. Billy Pearson.
I'm with you. Good evening. I'm Billy Pearson, I live in thirty-two Cedar Knoll. I've been living in there for a long time. Uh, my wife grew up in that house, um, we made a lot of good friends with a lot of elderly people that have lived there pretty much all their life. Uh, they plan on dying there, retiring there, they don't have any plans of, uh, moving or going anywhere else. It's a nice, quiet neighborhood. Just, they enjoy it, made a lot of good friends. And, um, we are opposed of they building this big complex right here. Princeton Place is a neighborhood across that field. And, uh, it's, every other weekend, we hear gunshots. I don't know if it's, it's a, a bad environment, not only for Cedar Knoll, but Brookhaven, Idlewood. And, um, we've had cars broken in, uh, stuff stolen. I found stuff from Brookhaven over that little road right there that, that splits my, my house and number thirty. I found people's stuff laying that little road, that road doesn't come all the way through, it's just a paved road that stops right there. Now, I was informed that that road post continued through into this big complex? Or, cause on, on the way, other entrance is through Matt Follin Boulevard out there, there's only a, other entrance to Princeton Place. And we surely are opposed of, of that road coming through between right beside my house into that complex. Cause it's already, you know, gunshot more, uh, shots going on, loud music, you know? I work for a living, my wa- wife works for a living, the lady next to me works for a living. And then, we just don't want no loud confrontation going on during the night. By saying is that Princeton Place right, right there, comes through there where people have to come through.
Uh, sir, could you, could you speak in the microphone?
Step to the microphone, please, so we can record this.
People have to come through that road, i- if that's the only available entrance through there, then people are not gonna want to buy or rent that, any houses or, I mean, they, they, they look good. But, you know, generally speaking, common sense is, they don't wanna drive through a neighborhood where they hear a lot of loud music, gunshots every night, it's, they're not gonna sell. Then by, by that, they're gonna have to turn around and make money somehow. So we're thinking they're gonna turn into Section Eight housing. I mean, it's, the plan looks good, um, the, the first guy, I knew Mr. Bill that owned that property, and he says, whenever he's alive, it will not get developed. Well, he handed it down to his daughter and son-in-law, well, they turned around and sold it to Mr. Hayesville, and now he is selling it, cause he used to live in that neighborhood. I have many talks with him and told him that we do not want no Section Eight apartments or housing in that field. The power company comes through there, they had to work the power lines, they had to cut back the trees and stuff. And then they got a big old, uh, substation down to the left, to the, the east side there. And I think I speak for a lot of people in Brookhaven and Idlewood, and that they agree a hundred percent that it's gonna affect our neighborhood. We like, we don't have much, what little we got, we're happy with, and we just like the way, uh, things, things are. And we are opposed to this one hundred percent. Boy, they would not, uh, make a good spot for some storm shivers. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, have, have we not, we had something that dealt with Cedar Knoll in the past? Did we ever have this property come up?
I, I don't remember.
There's something around Cedar Knoll.
There was some stuff on the, there was some stuff on the, uh, Harrow Grove side that we looked at.
Oh, on the other side, okay, all right.
Not this one.
Uh, got one more person signed up, Mr. Gary Ward.
I'm Gary Ward, I live in three zero three three Twelfth Avenue East. I'm in the Princeton Heights or Princeton Place subdivision. Uh, first, I wanna thank all my neighbors for taking the time to come here when it's a cold night and, uh, if we had short notice, so thank you for that. I'm against the petitioner's request, uh, to rezon the property, but first, I'd like to begin by asking the commission, uh, to postpone action on the developer's petition until a future commission meeting for the following reasons. Number one, those of us on the side of Twelfth Avenue East, and if you look at Twelfth Avenue East, my house is the one with the green roof. Those of us on that side, uh, whose property line borders the property line of the proposed development, received their notification letter about the petitioner's hearing on January fifteenth, just seven days ago. It's given very little time to put together any kind of response. The developers have been working on this since at least October of twenty twenty-four. Uh, number two, uh, though I'm sure it's a minimum requirement, the notification of the hearing was sent only to those homeowners, as far as I know, whose property line borders the property line of the proposed subdivision. There are only about fifty properties in the Princeton Heights, Princeton Place subdivision, and I would speculate that only a very small number of residents ever received a letter announcing this hearing. Third, the lack of any prior communication about the developer's plans to any group of Princeton Heights or Princeton Place, uh, homeowners and residents. Number four, an approved City of Tuscaloosa sign announcing the hearing for the petition was finally posted on the developer's property at approximately nine thirty yesterday morning, less than thirty-six hours before the scheduled start of this meeting. The sign was placed on a spot on the developer's property on thirty-first Street East where it would probably only be seen by two to three residents since almost all of the houses from the sign's location to the end of thirty-first Street East are vacant. And finally, because of the extremely cold temperatures, several Princeton Heights, Princeton Place residents, uh, and homeowners who wanted to be here have health issues, uh, which preclude them from being out in the extreme cold, and they are not able to attend tonight in person. I believe in particular that the first four things that I highlighted give me the appearance that this is trying to be put through for approval as quickly as possible without any of the residents, homeowners of Princeton Place, Princeton Heights having any opportunity whatsoever to prepare. In asking for the postponement, I know the homeowners and residents of Princeton Place would gladly accept the opportunity to address the developer's petition at a future commission meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Ward, thank you. Anybody else here wanna speak, uh, in opposition?
Could I also chime in on, just to, just to confirm a few things, cause we've.
Okay, let's, excuse, go ahead, Zach.
So, um, we've mailed those letters two weeks in advance when we're really required to mail it one week in advance. We mail them to all property owners within a five-hundred-foot buffer for a rezoning and within a, the adjacent properties, as y'all know, for the subdivisions. So we, we, we have all documentation that we have sent those mailings. We send them early so that, because we know that USPS has some struggles, we have been trying to figure out a way to not have to mail letters in this, like, to, to figure out a better way rather than rely on USPS essentially.
Right.
Um, and as for the sign, we, we've requested to put that out a week prior and unfortunately, it was, it sounds like it was put out today, I can't confirm or deny that. But I just wanna be clear that we, we, we push these hard and, as you can see tonight, the many people that have come forward, it's the same process for every single one of these cases.
I, I get it with the mail, this day and age, you're like, especially around this time of year, so, I understand. All right, thank you. Um, yep, yes, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, please.
Lewanda Corley, three thousand one, Twelfth Avenue East in Tuscaloosa. I moved here in twenty-eleven, right before the big tornado. And, uh, I was really close to getting hit right there by the tornado, actually some debris hit my house. I had just put a new roof on it. I was freaked out, thought they had moved me to hell. But, um, the development here is going to be a bad idea for this neighborhood. This is a quiet, well-established. This is a quiet, well-established neighborhood that was built in the mid-seventies. The houses are at least two hundred square, two thousand square feet or more. Mine's almost three thousand. They have been improved, the neighbors all take care of their lawns, it's all good. Um, that big field that used to be leased to a farmer that would actually grow crops and sell them at the farmer's market or throughout, or give them to the neighbors. It would be nice to have a Tuscaloosa city gardens, community gardens, unless we have one already that I'm not aware of. That would be an interesting proposition and something different that, that would attract, be attractive. This mess that they're gonna put in there with one way in, one way out is gonna be craziness. There's a three-minute light, red light, at the intersection of Thirty First Street and McFarland. When you go on there to try to turn left, you sit there for three minutes. I timed it. It's three minutes. Whether, and with that many more cars there, another hundred cars, they're gonna be backed up for a long time. Plus, you gotta think about school buses going in and out, garbage trucks going in and out, what about fire and rescue? How in the heck are they gonna get in and out with one way in, one way out? That, that's a dead-end street there. It ends in nothing. It goes down to the end and then it's woods and a field and the little lake and all that. You know, there's a few houses scattered right in there, but it's not like a hundred thousand people crammed in there. I mean, there's not gonna be that many, obviously. But with eighty new homes and these townhouses, oh my God, the traffic and, and all the cars. I, I just don't understand how this is even possible to try to cram that many in there. I don't mind having that field developed, but try to do it within the keeping of the rest of the neighborhood. So that we have larger homes, bigger lots, and fewer families or fewer cars living there and have a little bit better. I mean, the, the proposals that they are wanting you to spend between two and, two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars for a thirteen hundred square foot cracker box? With, with that, that's crazy. My house is probably worth that now and it's close to three thousand square feet with a nice backyard and a nice front yard and a quiet neighborhood on a, on a cul-de-sac. Why can't the rest of that be developed like this? I understand people wanna turn a big profit and they gonna sell, cram as many little cracker boxes in there as they can. But right now on the market, just on Zillow, there's two hundred and fifty-five homes and condos for sale right now in my zip code.
And where?
In three, five, four oh five. I just went on Zillow, it's about two hundred and fifty-five homes, townhouses and condos for sale right now.
Is that a lot? I mean, is that?
For Tuscaloosa, it may be. And, and I was looking at, you know, they're talking about all these kids, graduates and all this from the university. Most of them move home with their parents cause they can't afford a house. They gonna, they're not gonna be able to afford two, three hundred thousand dollars right out of school. Cause not everybody graduates to be a doctor or a lawyer from university. There's other people that will be struggling. You know how it is right out of college, you don't make no money? I didn't. I was lucky to scrape by with a one-bedroom apartment for a while till I grew up and started having to really work for a living and make some money until I retired. I've improved my home, I love it, I love the neighborhood, but I will leave. And I mean, not just Tuscaloosa, I will leave the county if this happens. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Cor. Uh, anyone else here speak, uh, against this petition? Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Roycroft. I live at three thousand eleventh Avenue East in Princeton Place. I was one of the people that never got a notice, um, and I didn't particularly like where they put the sign because no one drives all the way to the end because it's a dead-end street. I'm concerned about the number of vehicles trying to get in and out of that little dead-end street. I'm also concerned about the, the square footage of some of these homes. They're gonna be so small, I think they're gonna end up becoming rental properties. And I think that's going to deteriorate the neighborhood as it is. Uh, been in that neighborhood for almost forty years and it's always been a very quiet, um, older people live there. It's just been a very nice, peaceful neighborhood. With that many houses and that many people back coming and going, I, I just see it deteriorating in long, long down the road in twenty years. Um, and I was late, I just keep it sweet, but, uh, there's just way too many cars on that little street. And, and I don't know how many times I've seen bad wrecks at that intersection coming in and out of there. Um, that's it, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Alright, uh, this is our fourth. Real quick, please. Yes. Can, can, can I have the microphone?
The little driveway there, can you blow it up? So I can kinda, on a, now, but back to that same picture, but can you make it, blow it up? There's a little halfway driveway that comes through, then it stops.
You talking about the, the, the connector corridor right there beside your house?
Right.
Right, there's a small part of it that is paved, not, not the whole thing's paved.
Right.
Yes.
So there's no intention of that road continuing on to those parts?
Not, not under this plan as it's shown.
Alright, well, I was informed.
The, the way that they're, they're plotting this, there'll be a house blocking it, so there will never be any connectivity.
Well, like I said earlier, the power company has to come through there.
Okay, thank you.
But I was told that we could buy that little stretch of pavement right there from the city. And either us and my neighbors or my surrounding neighbors.
That, 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 if this got developed, that could be something future with the city down the road, yes, but that's, that's down the road.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, anyone here, we've already had our fourth person come up, ma'am, I'm sorry. Um, any, anyone here to speak for this outside the developers? Petitioner, come back up, there's been several things brought up concerning this. Um, density and keeping with, hang on.
Let me go back through a few things. Uh, number one, you, I don't wanna come up in front of y'all, ever, and not have some of these things worked out. I mean, I've been doing this for thirty-eight years, so had I known. Yeah, I know and I am getting there. Um, Mike can vouch for me. Um, but we, we would have already met with these neighborhoods and, and tried to work some of these issues out and I, we will be happy to. Uh, I know, I certainly will. Um, we, we tried to do some things on the perimeter to maintain, you know, somewhat of a buffer between the Princeton Heights Place and Cedar Knoll. And we certainly realize that all of those homes have been there forever. And what I understand, nobody wants to see this property developed. It's been a, basically a big garden for, you know, seventy years. But the truth of the matter is, it's probably gonna be developed at some point in time. Um, the density thing, of course, I mean, I realize, but, uh, if it was all developable, developable, you didn't have a floodway fringe and stuff to deal with, and about twenty-seven acres that could be developed. If it was developed as R1, you're still looking at almost ninety-eight units over twenty-seven acres. Um, so, you know, getting back to that, it's dense on this side because it's easy to develop. South side of the road is harder to develop. I've already made that statement. We're trying to leave a buffer and do some things to accommodate everybody and make them happy. Um, a nature preserve, uh, rebuild that lake, so because of the dams destroyed on it, it's kind of an eyesore now. Improve Thirty First Street. Um, we've met with the fire chief, the two fire entrance, I mean, the two entrances that we have meet fire code requirements. Um, you know, there, we've done, we've done a lot of things to try to, to try to make this a little bit better and we've tried to keep them in, in mind as well. Uh, if, if continuing is the thing to do, to allow me time to meet with all these and that's what the board wants me to do, I'd be happy to do it. Um, and I'll certainly look at it and see if we can make some changes if y'all got some other things that you wanna throw at me before we, before we, before we leave tonight.
Mr. McGuire, I guess. You said it really, but, you know, I really understand, you know, pockets of undeveloped property, they really create a liability. And like this gentleman said, you know, there're gunshots over there and really the best way to prevent the gunshots is really develop it and do it in a positive way. But I think it was a prior, uh, commission that, that said, I think it was Jimmy Warren or Aaron Christian. And I said it was ten pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack one night. Remember that, Tim?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that kinda, that kinda rings true here a little bit. I'm trying to figure out if you pull a car, I'm trying, first of all, I'm trying to figure out where the cars do pull in. But after I do figure that out, I, I can't figure out where you're gonna plant a tree.
Well, Stephen, they're not small lot, the perimeter lots especially.
They're not small?
I've managed in there nine to ten thousand square feet.
Alright, so I assume the front is a garage?
Yeah, the front, the fronts, if you zoom in, I don't know if you can see, like, forty-eight. There's a two-car garage on every single family detached home with two parking spaces.
So there's two car, so it's two-car garage and how wide are they, forty? They're forty feet wide?
The interior lots are fifty.
Okay.
And then the perimeter lots are all sixty or better.
So I'm just saying, where, where would you plant a tree in this neighborhood?
There's a front yard, there's a backyard.
Alright.
I mean, there's almost sixty feet between the back of each house and the back of the other house.
It would help if you draw the driveways, maybe that, maybe then I'd know.
Well, I mean, it's.
And, and look, I'm, I didn't, I didn't.
There's, yeah, there's the, the detail of what we're proposing for each one, and that's the smaller lots. I mean, I can, again, I mean, I can, I can get you anything you wanna look at.
Look, I mean, I've, I've owned property at Cedar Knoll and, and these neighborhoods and they're very nice family neighborhoods and I don't consider them overly large. I mean, when I'm looking at the footprint, I don't see them as big estate lots. But I mean, they, these are smaller. I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, the way this looks, it looks like the roofs are nearly touching. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just putting my hat on like, like these people. I mean, I understand workforce housing and good, you know, we need, I, I realize that some, some parcels you have to have higher density to make the numbers work. But Lord, I think a cat could walk from one end of this neighborhood to the other without ever touching the ground.
Yep, it's, uh, first of all, it's thirty acres on a forty-inch scale. I mean, if I wanted to, I mean, if we submitted a drawing that was thirty-six by forty-eight and it was on a twenty scale, it would certainly look a little bit more separated.
How far apart are those houses?
Uh, they're fifty, I think they're ten feet between each home.
So you've got a seven, seven-foot setback on each house?
I'm sorry?
The, the setback, side yard setback on these houses are what?
They're, well, I believe they're five on the smaller lots.
They're five, so these houses are ten feet apart?
Yes.
Alright, so, so, and, and so you're gonna drag that three-and-a-half foot wide garbage cart, I guess, through that five-foot, five-foot wide gap and grab a fence? I don't know. It, it, it just looks, look, I'm all about, I can understand density, this just seems a little dense. Just seems a little dense to me. I mean, I, but, but I think you know that. I mean, are you saying, is your, is your client saying this num, this doesn't work unless you get this number? And you're saying that if you add this lake, then the density isn't that great, but that lake, you're not building houses on that lake, so. I'm just saying it's a little tight, Mike. I mean, dang.
Mike, I, I'm, I tend to agree with Mr. Rumsey. Scary that I do, to be honest with you. I do agree with Mr. Rumsey on this one. I mean, I, and I, and I appreciate you making the offer to continue to have conversations with the neighbors. I, I, we all, it, i- if that, if, anytime you're one of, you're one of the good guys up here and know the system, but if, anytime that a, a, a developer has the opportunity to talk to the neighbors, it gives us a little better assumption if they're being unreasonable or they're, they're being reasonable. Neighbors have to understand that this property is a good piece of property in Tuscaloosa and some point in time it's gonna be developed. I'm surprised it hadn't already. Um, I think it's got a lot of issues. I think you, you're on top of them. I think working out that access, working out the street, that's, that's gonna be paramount, be able to get, get, you know, fire department in, garbage trucks in. A, apparently, the power company has to access this through somehow. I, I, I just feel like that the density of what you got adjacent to the existing neighbors is not in keeping with that type of neighborhood. I get it, those neighborhoods were built when it was time, single family hells, houses, and they were a lot dense and land was different back then. But I've gotta feel like there's gotta be a happy median here of what you have versus what you're boarding, bordering against to, you know? We, we, we deal with neighborhoods every night, that every time we're up here, that doesn't want anybody built behind it. It's not real, realistic. It, it's gonna happen. Just in my opinion, I'm, I agree with Mr. Rumsey. It feels like we're, we're getting, making it too dense. And if you can build, alleviate some of that density adjacent across the road with that lake, then that might, that might help you get your density back. I can't, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, one, one more comment, and, and this isn't picking on Mr. McGuire, it's actually, it's actually a theme that I've seen tonight. The drawings that we're seeing are very hard to read. I have seen drawings over the years. I mean, I, I'm over here screening my eyes. I can't, I can't even make out, I can't make out the widths, I can't make, make out the lengths. And I, I'm asking maybe Mr. Gardner, maybe, maybe you could press on the engineers a little bit, maybe blow them up better or, or maybe even some. I've seen them before with color where we could tell where a tree might go if, you know, I can't even tell. I, I'm telling you, I can't, he said they're forty feet wide or fifty, I can't tell, but, I mean, honestly.
Hey, get us a bigger screen for our old eyes up here, how about that?
I mean, I'm sitting over here like my phone, I keep trying to enlarge it and I can't.
But then when we get them in our packets, when they are big, you, it, it fills up your whole screen, so then you can't really, and I can't figure out how to shrink it so that I can at least see the whole subdivision and then increase where I need to increase it to look. I mean, I think it's just a product of how much, how many acres has to be on a plaque.
I mean, you've been working with this every day. You can't read those numbers.
Well, I can, cause it's, I mean, I can push a button and blow it up. And I, I understand, I mean, but this, and I know Tim said earlier, he'd like to see it on one sheet. Well, this is two, twenty-four by thirty-six in sheets because it's so much acreage.
It, it, it's the saving. It's the saving because it is, but I mean, still.
You know, another thing too, maybe, maybe you bring it in, in context to some of the successful neighborhoods that have been done in the city. You know, you look at, uh, Reston Place. I mean, Reston Place has townhomes and it has garden homes. I assume these are garden homes, right?
Yes.
I mean, maybe if you could compare it to some of the ones that have been successful and you show the density as it relates, I, I just can't tell. It looks like solid roof to me.
I agree, but you don't want me to bring Reston Place and compare it to this.
It would help. I think if it makes, if it helps you sell it to the neighbors, it is, it's, it's.
I think, I think that that's, I, I think that's where you can, I mean, look, we, we, we can move forward if you want to, I mean, I.
Well, I, I think maybe the thing to do is, is continue it. I don't, I mean, I think if we move forward, it's not gonna be good for us. Um, let, give me some time to meet with these, these people. Uh, let me get with my clients, see what I can do about maybe addressing some of Stephen's issues, your issues, and I'm sure everybody else's as well. Um, see what I can come up with and try to get back here next month.
I appreciate that, Mike, and I, I, I would, I would like to talk to the neighborhood people over here.
No, 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 I think you go where I was about to.
Yeah, I, I want y'all to understand, Mike's one of the good guys. Mike is, Mike has been here a while. He does, he, he does know. But he does know the rules, he does know what we can do, and I, I implore you to listen to him and try to work with him and y'all try to come with some agreement, cause that would help us, obviously help us with the situation. So don't, don't turn a deaf ear to him when he does come.
Chair, I just have one quick question. Have you talked to the council representative for this district?
We've met with him twice on site, walked the whole site. I mean, it was an eyesore to begin with. I mean, there was stuff all over this property. They have spent a fortune just cleaning up the trash.
I bet.
Alright, alright, um, so formally, so, uh, commission before us, we have a request for uh, GDP zero four dash two five Cedar Forest and PS zero seven two five to be, um, be delayed, uh, for, for another date. Uh, do I have a motion?
Go, second.
Uh, sign, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll continue.
What, can I add something real quick?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, we submitted this in October. Staff asked us to wait until January, so, I mean, I've heard statements that we were trying to push this through real quick. That's not the case at all.
I understand.
So I just wanted you guys to know.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Alright, commission and other business tonight? Maybe we'll give folks a sec here.
Y'all can carry this outside, please, be quiet. Y'all can carry this outside, please. Be quiet.
All right, moving on, we have a street vacation request. This is V oh one twenty-five vacating point-nine acres, part of the right-of-way known as Sixteenth Street, abutting Lot One of the Tosioli subdivision. This is Council District Two. You can see we're right next to Central High School, and there is that right-of-way to be vacated. And here is a map showing that vacation.
Please, please exit quietly.
You can see, uh, no issues identified from staff, and we did not receive any public comment on this one. Do you have any questions for staff?
Uh, Commissioner, any questions for staff on this one? Any questions? This is a remnant piece that we're trying to get rid of our liabilities on. Is that correct? Can we do a voice vote?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner, before us, I have vacation V zero one dash two five. Uh, I'm asked for a motion.
Motion.
All signifying by saying yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. We are... Good job.